Let me know when you're ready, Mr. Bowman.
I'm just about there here. One second. All right, we are live.
Thank you, Moment. Good evening, Harrisburg, and welcome back for reconvening the Harrisburg City Council Special Legislature Session from December 10th, 2020. This time, I'm calling the meeting back into order. I will move the meeting and allow Mr. Ben Allen to speak. I think there was some continuing questions on Bill 10 or Bill 14.
Yes, and just by way of procedure, I think I'm going to make a statement and then do we want to go into ordinance for amendment and suspend the rules for discussion amendment? Is that procedurally what we want to do?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So thanks, everybody, for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I know that I've spoken quite a bit over the last few weeks regarding the budget and the process. And I think I want to talk about a few things. So fast your seatbelts and bear with me a little bit as I kind of jump through some of the notes and things I wanted to make sure that I highlighted. First, I've gone back and forth with Neil and looking at council's responsibility when it comes to the budget. And I know I don't have to reiterate what our system of government here is in the city of Harrisburg. We do have a strong mayor form of government. And that gives great authority to the mayor to be able to propose a budget every year. And in many cases, the proposal of the budget that the mayor has put forth is typically a reflection of the priorities that he wants to put forth in the, you know, the upcoming fiscal year. That is usually what creates the most debate, right? In many cases, it's a, it's time where we spend reviewing what those priorities are and how we feel about them. Either on a personal level, how the city feels about them and how developed we feel like those ideas are. And in many cases, it creates, you know, a disagreement one way or the other in terms of what we feel that the mayor's party should be or what they can be or what they can't be or what they aren't. All that being said, is I think it's really important to point out that it is within the mayor's rights every year to propose the budget and to put forth the priorities as he sees fit. And it's council's obligation and duty to serve as the checks and balances on that, particularly when it comes to the appropriations and weigh in on how we feel about that, you know, one way or the other, when it comes to appropriations. Now, having said that, I think one of the most difficult things that we've encountered, you know, in, at least in my time, and this is now the seventh budget that I've been involved with, is really when it comes down to what we say and what we do when it comes to appropriations. And in many cases, we could reject appropriations and then they go away. And that does eliminate or reduce the mayor's priorities when it comes to that particular department line item and what that means. But also keep in mind too, that when we do decrease something, that just, it makes it go away. It's not there anymore and it's not appropriated for 20, for the next fiscal year. Why is that significant? It's significant because if we believe on one hand that some of these things should be discussed and further develop, there's probably room for us to be able to allow the mayor some latitude to pursue what his policy goals are. I think a, the best system that we have in place can and should work when it's working perfectly involves council's participation in that process. And I think that's where we're in a win-win situation. And I know historically, there's times when council does not feel that that is the case. And I think that's the ongoing conversation we've often had is how we get to that point of working together collaboratively in our respective roles. So I think that's a big part of, you know, the processes. But again, one of the dangers, for instance, if we vote a budget down, is that that budget reverts back to the 20, or the current year, 2020. I keep saying 2019 as if I want to go back to 2019. Maybe sometimes I do because of 2020 and how it's been. However, that is a dangerous proposition for us to look at right now. And the reason why is so many of the things that we've discussed that want attention. The appropriations for infrastructure, the appropriations we've made or proposed for sanitation and providing the services and creating additional revenue coming into the city from serving different municipalities, these small business loans we've approved and things that are going out, these are all things that are part of the proposed 2022 budget. And I realize that sometimes we may disagree about pieces of the budget, but simply voting no on a budget like this makes all those things go away. And that's something that I think is really important for us to understand and think through that. And there's plenty of times for disagreement about policy and we will have that and that conversation is ongoing and will continue no matter what. But we have some difficult things before us in terms of whether or not we feel we should appropriate something and go through. As many of you know, I've asked the mayor to allow some, you know, input from us when it comes to fully developing some of these things out. And I believe I sent the email from the mayor, but I will read the email from the mayor that he sent to me prior to the meeting. And I know I've worded out so free, I hopefully had a chance to see it. The mayor, and I'll read, said, please let this email service confirmation the following. I pledge to establish a CSA task force and to include council public safety chair, Asha Green, in the hiring process of the CSA roles. With the budget reallocation in the new year, I pledge to report to council the cumulative amount of unspent personnel funds each quarter and discuss with council the possibility of reallocating these funds for COVID relief, spa business loan support, light demolition, et cetera, however council sees that the priority should be in the moment that that occurs. Also from the mayor, I commit that beginning in 2021, the administration shall participate in public safety work sessions to review and identify the new civilian roles in the police department and to ensure the public is informed about these roles. Hiring will be slow and methodical, I can talk, methodological, and council will be a partner in that process. Lastly, I shall in the new year identify who in public safety is responsible for reporting back to council requested information and commit to making receipt of timely data a priority. Sincerely yours, Eric Papenfus. So I wanted to share that with everybody. I think I sent it out, but I wanted to read it out into the public. Now, moving on, there's been a lot of conversations about data and, you know, public safety budgets and what it should be. So me being the data nerd that I am, has been spending a lot of time reading through a lot of what is going along in the universe when it comes to law enforcement. And I will first say this, that, you know, it is not often a question of whether or not we should have public safety. I don't know that that's a great question that anyone should ever put out there. I think the question is what we want public safety to be. There's two sides to that equation. One, adequately funding law enforcement and public safety to ensure the safety and security of our residents. That is part one. Part two is policy and procedural. Those are things that don't really, aren't really covered kind of from a budgetary standpoint. But it's really important to the length of the conversations we've had both nationally and locally. And those conversations and that dialogue has to continue. And those conversations dialogue have to lead to changes with how we as both a nation and localized as law enforcement professionals work to make sure that we are providing true public safety and working with our community and changing systematic oppressive regimes that have been longstanding present in the national scene when it comes to law enforcement. Those are conversations that have to continue. But my pleading with our colleagues is that the funding of public safety is so important. And I know we've heard a lot of public comments asking for us to take away the budget. But I can honestly say that, and I, and I'm sure many people can relate to this, when we are talking to our constituents, we've knocked on doors and we've done the things that we need to be doing and connecting with our community, the number one thing that has often come back to us is that people want adequate public safety. They want to feel safe. You know, when we've looked at this past year, we've had 18 homicides and two deaths that are still, the determination is pending. That's significant. We have a problem with violence in our city and we need to address that. And the means that we address that is through the mechanisms that we utilize for public safety. And that's something that I believe very strongly with. You know, there are those of us around this, you know, table and in our community that who have been affected by gun violence, who have dealt with death and violence in their families and have had to deal with loss of people. We all know people unfortunately in our city and we know too many people who've had to deal with that. And we also know what it likes when, when, we also know many of us, myself including, what it feels like when someone perpetuated a crime on you, on you, on your home. And we also know what that feels like. And I, and I know that there's been so many conversations about the bad cops and I'm going to put that in quote and things like that that go on. But I want to share that when our home was broken into several years ago. And when the cops showed up, it was the first time I allowed myself to breathe. Why? Because I was petrified. I was terrified. I felt violated. I was terrified. My husband was terrified. And the first time I could breathe is when the law enforcement officer showed up at our house and calmed me and made me feel, start to feel safe again. I know that I'm not alone in those types of feelings. And I know that many of us have had to face that similar prospect. So again, I'm not dissuading the fact that there's situations, the bad cops, I don't remember the cop's name that showed up at my house, but I remember his face always and remember the fact that he handled himself with such professionalism and kept us calm. And at the end of the day, a lot of people say, well, of course he did because he was coming to a council member's house. He didn't know who I was at all. And that is something that I'm always proud to say that he didn't because he's just treating me like a human being, which is what I needed in that moment in time. Now, again, I know people have different experiences with law enforcement and I don't want to shortchange the bad ones and just say everything's all good. But again, you know, you can't put a value on the fact that we need to have effective public safety moving forward. Again, I mentioned I was doing a lot of work and studies on looking at law enforcement. And just to be clear, I was focusing on progressive law enforcement studies because I didn't want to get down the treasure trove of extreme right wing ideology when it comes to militarization of the police. I was staying far away from that because that's not an ideology I want to go down. But there's been several studies in the last few years when it pertains to law enforcement. One in 2018 by Stephen Mello of Princeton University that analyzed trends where law enforcement agencies have been able to implement the models of cops, which is the community oriented police services. Cities who received additional funding to increase their funding have been able to increase, if they've been able to increase staffing by 3.2%. Saw if they were doing that, at least that, they were able to see a 3.5% decrease in crime. So the, Stephen Mello is basically saying, long and short, is that with every increase in funding that goes to law enforcement when it comes to staffing levels, they were able to see a direct correlation to a decrease in crime. A larger study was done by Aaron Shaflin and Justin McCrary that looked at data over 40 years in law enforcement trends and concluded that for every dollar spent on extra policing, it generated about $1.63 in social benefits back to the community in terms of safety initiatives that were able to be put in place. A recent study that was conducted over 2018 and 2019 by John McDonald, Jeffrey Fagan, and Amanda Geller, looked at localized police surges and found two things. One, that the stop and frisk mentality had a negative impact on community relations, which we can all attest to and agree to. But that the increased presence of law enforcement on its own was a deterrent in crime and led to crime deduction, reduction. Additional evidence was shown that increased staffing levels would reduce the number of excessive force incidents. And a key indicator drawn from the evidence was that fatigue was a major factor. Reducing fatigue also decreased incidence of excessive force. Three separate studies from 2017 through 2018 of audits of King County in Washington and also Phoenix found that when officers were forced to work more shifts, longer shifts and more staff, and more staffing levels were at critical levels, increased complaints about officer conduct and behavior were reported. Journalist Matthew Iglesias offers some real numbers to counter rampant speculation we're hearing from many people that who are understandably upset with policeman misconduct. This conclusion, one of the most robust, most uncomfortable findings in criminology is that putting more officers on the streets leads to less violent crime. Therefore, if you want to increase violent crime in rich and poor neighborhoods alike, simply remove police officers. Here's some specific cases summarized by Iglesias, who's a journalist. Click, John McDonald and Ben Grunwald looked at an episode when the University of Pennsylvania had its campus police increased patrols within divine, with its, within its defined zone of Philadelphia and used a regression discontinuity designed to discover that crime fell about 60%. This time with a larger decline for violent crime where the extra officers went. Stephen Mello, again, I already referenced him earlier, looked at a huge surge in federal funding for local police staffing associated with the 2009 stimulus bill. Exploiting quasi-random variation which cities got grants, Mello showed that compared to cities that missed out, those that made the cut ended up with police staffing levels at 3.2% higher and then therefore 3.5% lower in violent crime. And then also he referenced John McDonald, Jeffrey Fagan, and Amanda Geller, the same report that I referenced. Long story short, and I could go on, there's studies that show a lot of different things. And I think it's important because the conversation obviously needs to continue when it comes to how we approach law enforcement, public safety within our community. But simply with removing funds or decreasing funding isn't really the answer to solving and reducing crime. It is something that is tangential to our larger experience that we need to have in providing and protecting our city's residents. These conversations should continue and they need to go on. But the appropriations, I think, are very important when it comes to public safety. Lastly, I do want to address kind of the, kind of the public comment and kind of the, just the, the overall theme of things I've noticed. You know, social media is a dirty word sometimes, but you know, we're all called to be leaders in this role. We are called to act in the best interest of the community that we serve. We are often called to cut through the noise and to cut through the things that people say about us and to us and be able to do that. But it's not without impact, right? You know, we've all been victims of people attacking us for one thing or another. You know, I've always been proud to serve on this body, knowing that I've never served with a more diverse group of people coming from so many different backgrounds and representing communities that we each want to serve and serve with respect and with love and with, you know, adoration. And I love how we all work together in order to do that. But it's hard when hate is thrown at us. And I've seen over the last few weeks, levels of hate that have really troubled me and the things that people have said. You know, true leadership is something we step up and you say what you need to say. You encourage discussion to continue, but you don't attack. And you don't, you don't denigrate other people in that process. And that's something that we all need to, you know, constantly remember in that process. I know personally, during my time on council, one of the worst experiences I had is when I was attacked for being gay and being married to a man. Why I had to be attacked for both, I'm not sure because they both, they lead into each other. But those attacks were hard. It was hard for myself and it was hard for my family. Over the last few weeks, once again, I felt like I was attacked, this time coming from a community that really wants to be heard. And believe me, I want to listen. But I'm all for respectful dialogue and that's how it needs to be and that's how it should be. At the end of the day, all we have is our integrity. That's something that I've worked hard to maintain and during my entire time on council. And we'll continue to do that until the day of my term ends and will, and I encourage all of us to conduct ourselves in the same way. You know, leadership counts in these moments and I think that's something that I want to be able to share. So I'm sorry that I've talked for a long time. Thank you for indulging me. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do this. I've always been honored to serve as our budget finance chair. I know initially I was given that role because no one else wanted it. But I have it and I've relished it. And I enjoy working with all of you and doing this. And I know that we often have difficult decisions before us to make. But this is what we were called to do. This is the job that we were given. This is part of the service that we have to our community and our residents at large. And again, I want for more dialogue to continue. I want for respectful dialogue to continue. And I want to make sure that we are a community that values respectful dialogue back and forth with each other. And that's up to for us to hold that first within our body and then obviously taking that in the community. And for any leaders out there that want to serve, keep that in mind, that integrity matters, leadership matters, and respectful dialogue matters the most, more than anything else. So thank you for indulging me in these moments. I will turn it back over to you, council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, but I thought you were going to bring up the amendments.
Well, I know, I'm going to move in. Did you want to bring us to that section? Just, what is it called? Sorry, let me go back to the agenda. I've got change screens here.
Before I do that, Mr. Allen, let me speak with Mr. Majors. Mr. Majors, there's Bill 10 of 2020 that needs to be considered tonight. Are you ready to consider that particular piece of legislation? And that's the passage of the
Hold on one sec.
I did, I did
Yes, yes, no, I'm aware. That's the passage of the That's the Aggett Street vacation. I am just going back through some of the correspondence that I had today with the property owner. And then it's also my understanding that Mr. Weinstein is here. So I don't know if we want to take this out of order or are you looking to do this now and then come back to?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you want to consider that for the passage tonight. I just want to ask that. We'll move back to Mr. Allen and then we'll come to you. We'll do Bill 10, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, are you ready to present the amendments that you received?
Yes, so it's removing the ordinance for amendment. Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss the amendments?
There's a motion to suspend the rules to discuss the amendment. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We will now move back to Mr. Allen to discuss the amendments.
Thank you. So to date, we've received a number of amendments. I'm going to share the amendments procedurally and then we can discuss them for questions. The first amendment that we have was one that was referenced to last week through discussions with our public safety chair, council member Green. And this was an amendment to decrease the number of CSAs from 12 to seven. The thought process behind this was to be able to make this more of kind of a pilot program, have a CSA to represent each policing district, and that would reduce the overall amount of spend for CSAs from the salary level from the 12 to the seven. Council member Green, did I characterize that correctly? And did I miss anything on that?
No, you did very well. Thank you.
So are there any questions about that in particular in terms of that amendment or how that, you know, what that covers and what that leads to? One of the conditions that the mayor had agreed to is that we would have council member Green be a part of that hiring process. And certainly a part of that public safety process going forward in terms of work sessions in the new year to fully develop out what that role is. And our hope is that that would lead to a more, you know, fully developed process going forward, should this be a successful pilot program.
Yeah, so I have a, I have a question. I don't know. I guess it's maybe for Councilwoman Green since it's her amendment. Are you proposing to use any of those dollars or is this just a overall reduction in the city budget?
I was just proposing an overall reduction in the city budget.
Okay, thank you. So if, thank you. Yeah, I might have to come right back. My, my internet is. I'm going to try to log off and log back on. My apologies. I'll be right back.
We also had some amendments from council member Daniels. Give me a second as I bring them up as well.
You need to discuss one at a time, Mr. Allen.
All right. Do we have any more discussion on that? I'm sorry, on the amendment?
Is your proposal, Ms. Green, to decrease it from 12 to seven, which I agree with? But are you, is it your determination that you want to keep the 12 in the budget?
No, I would like to reduce the number in the budget there for reducing overall budget. So I'm not, I'm not looking to reallocate the money anywhere else. This time, I think especially during this time, it's no need to go try to reallocate it somewhere else. I'd rather be a little more cautious with our fiscal situation than looking to hurry up and reallocate it. But I would like to reduce it from 12 to seven.
Okay, thank you. I have any more questions, Mr. Allen?
I have a question.
Ms. Green, I mean, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. So Councilwoman Green, just to be clear, the, the reduction in the CSAs would not be impacted at all by the coresponders, correct? For like a budget neutral situation, this would be separate?
Yes, this will be separate. Originally, my plan was to increase the number of coresponders, but after talking to the police department, the county, the administration, everyone seems to be in agreement. They believe that three coresponders is the appropriate number at this time. And wouldn't like to see them jump to six coresponders at this time. And that over time, they'd like to see them continue to increase. But with the county expanding their current program and then us adding two more, they wouldn't like to see us add six more this year.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And then I think it's probably good. There's some discussion around the coresponders and whether or not the county would fund them. I think that that is still a distinct possibility that it can occur. The challenge that we have is that if we don't allocate it and say the county doesn't fund it, it's not out, it's not appropriated. So somehow the county does fund it, then we can reallocate those funds later, should that come to pass. But if we don't actually fund it and it doesn't happen, then we run the risk of not having it fully funded. So that was another part of the follow-up conversation I knew that council member Green and I had regarding that particular situation.
So one more question. Sorry, did we ever get any clarity from the county on funding at all or we're still, that's still in limbo?
Yeah, we, Ms. Green, you can answer that. I think we got some.
Yes, we got an email. I did send it out last, on a Thursday, was the only email we got that gave us, gave us some numbers and said that they planned on funding half of the position and benefits.
I did see the email, but thanks. I just wanted to note that for the public, we did get that clarity. So thank you.
And one of those things to, like several of those things would have to be resolved through an intergovernmental agreement before that could become finalized. So it's good that we have that kind of, you know, in the background, knowing that that's something we can most likely reappropriate later. But obviously, we want to get an intergovernmental agreement in place prior to that happening specifically. So it's kind of that, this is the extra assurance of making sure that it's funded regardless.
Yeah, but I, but I, I'm sorry, I'm back. My connection was unstable for me. So hopefully you guys aren't experiencing any lag on my end. So I guess part of, part of that piece in terms of the coresponder is out of the intergovernmental agreement would have to be between the administration and the county. And I don't know, based upon the conversations that have been occurring, if the administration is willing to receive those funds, since they would have to be, my understanding is that they would be county employees. So I don't know if, so I guess us allocating that money doesn't, is no guarantee that we'd have to reallocate because we may decide that those folks are the administration, not we. Because that would be up to the administration to decide on whether or not they were county employees or city employees. And I don't know if, you know, I guess it's more of a policy question than a budget question, but
That's why it'd be fair not to adjust that appropriation now because if there's not an agreement that's made through an intergovernmental agreement, we don't want to risk the funding. If we believe that the coresponders are an important role to have, we wouldn't necessarily just want to pull the funding to it if that hasn't been fully spelled out. But if it is, if that truly happens, we can reallocate those funds out of that if it's paid for in partnership with the county.
Yeah, but I guess we could also get some assurance from the administration on how they wanted to proceed. Just, I mean, for our edification, if we're going to be, you know, looking at some reallocations or even some movement. Because again, a, you know, as the previous amendment would be, would make a overall reduction in the budget. So we have to remove that, those funds or, you know, potentially reallocate them if necessary. So I'm just trying to understand where we are on the coresponder piece.
Mayor Papenfus, can you get us some kind of
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. I spoke to D H R to this afternoon. My, my personal opinion is that I would prefer to see the coresponders be city employees rather than county employees. However, I will pledge to council that if the county gets to us a proposal to fund these positions as, as county positions, that we will bring that to you in the new year for, for you to take under consideration and vote on. I'm not going to stand in the way of funding coming from the county to pay for these positions. And if, if that's the way the funding is going to come, then I think that's a, that's a benefit to our taxpayers. I will say, speaking to Fran Charter today, there was no guarantee of the funding. There was potentially enough money to pay for half of one of the two coresponders, but they hadn't identified the source of that funding yet. So what I'll pledge to do is bring a, bring whatever the county sends us to council in the new year. And, and if we have a proposal in which the county is willing to fund these positions and guarantee that we'll fund the positions, with that being contingent on them being county employees, I'll bring that to you for your consideration and consent. Does that sound good?
Okay, right now, I, I, look, again, we're just, at this point, because we are county taxpayers as well, I think we don't want to lose sight of that. So if they are willing to work with us, you know, it benefits us as well because, you know, I'm sure all of our, you know, city residents also pay county taxes. So, yeah.
If the county is willing to put in writing that they will pay for these positions, we will accept that and I will bring that agreement to you.
Okay.
And all I can say is, as of this afternoon, that was not guaranteed. Uh, and I all I can say is, as of this afternoon, that was not guaranteed. So I think it's wise that we uh keep the appropriation in the budget. And then I I I'll present to you a MOU with the county that uh proposed the funding in the new year if if they get that to us. Okay?
Any other questions pertaining to the previous amendment? Should we move on to the next amendments that were uh being proposed? Is that fair?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Allen.
So let me just bring up, give me. So Shemaine has uh several amendments that she had wanted to propose. Um, I'll read each individually, then, you know, uh, discuss as much as I possibly can. Shemaine wanted to make a amendment to raise the director's social equity salary to sixty-five thousand dollars a year as it makes them comparable to an equivalent role in the HR's office. I asked for some, you know, follow-up for that in terms of justification. Um, the the new director of social equity just started um this past, I guess, well, has it been a full month, Neil? I know we were just talking about this.
Now, you have to unmute yourself.
My apologies. Yes, she's been here about five, five and a half weeks. Um, tonight's her first HHRC meeting on her own. She got here right before the last one started.
So just for a point of clarification, she was hired at a salary of um of sixty thousand, I believe. Is that uh fair in terms of when looking in the budget?
That's correct.
So Shemaine had proposed increasing that to sixty-five. I I looked up the HR salaries as well. Um, our director is, you know, at at one level and and some other comparable people in HR are also in that sixty to sixty-five thousand dollar range. Um, so I can't speak to Shemaine's intent with this particular amendment specifically. Um, but again, as with everything, I wanted to make sure I I shared what the amendment was. And as always, I'll, I'll make the motion for the amendment uh when we get back into session. Um, any questions or any either insight that anyone else have on this particular amendment?
Did you have, did you have, uh, Mayor, maybe you were, you can answer this. Our other social, a director of social equality, what was the starting salary for her?
Uh, I can't answer that without looking that up, but uh it that was, I I think Neil Grover addressed last time. The position has changed a little bit in its focus and job description. And uh, when they did the search, they were, they were really focused on uh, on the sort of investigatory experience that this position would have. Um, my my only comment is, I think we've just brought this person on board. Um, uh, she's excellent and doing a wonderful job. Um, and uh, but I I'm not sure it would send the uh a a great message to newly hired employees to um insist on, you know, basically saying that we didn't, we're not paying them enough money. Uh, and uh, I'm willing to consider a a step increase for next year, once the person has had a year on the job and um uh had an opportunity to sort of prove themselves. But I I think Mr. Grover should weigh in on that as well, because he's the one who made this election and has engaged in the um, you know, contractual uh development of the position.
Just for a point of clarity, in the twenty-twenty adopted budget, the salary was sixty-two thousand nine hundred thirty. So it's just slightly increased in twenty-twenty budget, so it's lowered by uh two thousand nine hundred thirty dollars in the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget, so just.
Two thousand three hundred?
Yeah, two thousand nine hundred thirty, that's the difference between the twenty-twenty adopted budget and the twenty-twenty-one proposed.
Remember, that person got an increase after having been on the job for a while. So to start at sixty is, I think, in keeping with the position, but Neil, do you want to weigh in?
Certainly, and and I I think that is accurate. The the duties were different. I will note that when um we started looking and changed the job description, we actually, I think, advertised either fifty-two or fifty-four. And that did not bring a satisfactory pool of candidates, so we put it back to sixty thousand. Um, uh, and you know, we eventually ended up with two or three very good candidates after a very long search all at one time. But uh. But it, but the other salary had not approached sixty-five. I I don't know exactly what uh Councilwoman Daniels is pointing to with HR at the time. Uh, a- and I try to look at this as, um, you know, frankly, because there's other people under me as well about taking someone who's walked in the door and doing a percent like that. And I look at the union question as well of doing percentages with sort of no notice uh that's significantly different than um uh what the, what the union members are making. I mean, it is of some concern uh in terms of a management issue. Uh, I will note that Deborah is excellent. There's no question about that. Um, and her skills are, we're we're happy to have on board here. And uh, you know, I I I'm hoping we have someone who's a longtime committed employee to the city. But it, but it, but this one and another one that's proposed by Ms. Daniels. If council was going to entertain them, we would need to stop before a final vote to get a calculation on related cost of a salary increase because there are related costs. I just note that as a housekeeping matter, it's not just one thing. Um, and there is no calculation in here for that number. But sixty seems to be a fair number and it it actually attracted to us a series of very good candidates in the end. And we actually had a hard time coming to the final determination.
Any other, any questions pertaining to this particular amendment that will be proposed? Moving to uh the next.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I had to, I can't get off mute. Did she propose where those funds were supposed to come from?
No.
Okay.
Um, the second proposed amendment from Shemaine, um, she said, I would like the communications manager salary to go up. I'm not sure what is a good comparable point, either the city clerk salary at eighty or one of the directors' as well as expanded significantly during COVID and has taken on logistical work for council as well. Just for kind of point of clarification, um, this one as well. The uh current uh, let's go back moments in here right here, my entire column, we're talking about his role. So I'm sorry, Moment, then we're talking about your role. Um, the proposed salary um for uh the communications manager role that Moment is in is sixty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-five. That's a proposed, that's an increase uh from the twenty-twenty adopted budget of sixty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-five. Um, and so the, it seems that um Shemaine is proposing uh more of a director level salary. But that's not the role that uh Moment is is in right now. Um, I will let the admissions speak to um plans for that role, plans for the division, things like that, um, just so they want to add any insight. To that as well. I don't know, Mayor, Neil, anything you guys want to add to that?
Uh, I will add that we, we added a new position in communications. And uh, part of the the thought with that was to have somebody who was uh able to assist in the communications. And uh, I don't have that in front of me, but Moment, if if you're on and you want to talk about the, the, the new position, uh, this might be a reasonable time to mention that.
Sure, I can do that. Just give me one moment here.
Again, um, Ben, um, he's a communications manager. He's not a communications director, right? Okay. And the proposed salary increase is she wanted to go to what?
She said. I'm just reading her direct quote. I am not sure what is good comparable point, either the city clerk salary at eight year or one of the directors' as well as expanded significantly during COVID and has taken on logistical work for council as well.
Okay. So he's now making sixty-five or sixty-six, sixty-six, nine sixty-five, right?
Proposed for twenty-twenty-one is sixty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-five.
And she wants him to go to eight, eighty thousand. He's not a director, he's not even a manager.
She, she, so she didn't specify the amount. Uh, she still hasn't agreed to, she's not sure what she thought the amount should be uh in that proposed amendment. I think if we're going to do an amendment, there should be a, we should, you know, look at a, a number uh rather than just um a, you know, just something that's, that's out there.
But I, that's why I was asking the question, because I thought she was proposing eighty thousand dollars. Maybe I misunderstood you, Ben.
No, she didn't.
No, I read what was there. I, yeah.
I'm saying eighty thousand comparable to the city clerk's salary or one of the directors. So I don't know if there's something comparable um within the director's salary range.
Yeah, I mean, there's two things at play. And again, I, and I apologize, I emailed right back to Shemaine to, if she could provide some context or clarity to what her intent was. Um, but I would say from my perspective, there's two things at play. One, um, you know, the role is in at a manager level, not a director level. Um, so it looks like in some ways, and men would have to make to kind of change this, the role. Um, which I'm not sure that's something that we want to take on as part of this. And the second probably is the salary. So I think, I I mean, I, like I said, I will happily make all these motions. If it's not going to second, the motion fails. Um, and that's something that is just how that might go down.
City clerk has been here thirteen years or fourteen years respectively.
Oh, I, I, listen, again.
Okay, I'm making, I'm just making a statement that he's been here thirteen or fourteen years respectively. That's all. And her salary has increased over the years.
I just thought Moment could address the new multilingual community services coordinator position, because I think uh, I think that's an interesting position. It's something that he advocated for, and uh I think it's going to bring additional capacity to communications.
Moment, are you, are you there right now?
Yes, I can do that if.
So if you could, and and you know what, actually, maybe hold tight, because I'm going to have a question for you with another one too. Because I think I'm going to jump to um Shemaine's fourth statement, because I wonder if Moment, you might be able to help address that as part of the communications plan going forward for the city in twenty-twenty-one. But um Shemaine also wanted to propose um to increase the city council's communications budget by forty thousand. So our meetings and documents need to be accessible. Right now, a lot of our docs aren't compatible with software for the visually impaired. And we don't have documents or mechanisms for individuals with limited English proficiency or hearing limitations to be informed or participate in our meetings. The goal would be for the money to go to closed captioning or sign language during meetings and translation interpretation for other languages. Um, so that is an amendment, and I think it it does raise a very important point about the accessibility of our, our meetings and and such. Um, I I mentioned this to Council President before. We have twenty-three thousand dollars that sits in our budget for communications right now that we do not spend as it is. Um, but Moment, I know that you're speaking to some of the work that you've done. Can you speak to some of those larger things and see if we are actually tackling some of those things, kind of citywide, that we wouldn't obviously necessarily need to appropriate? Or maybe we could help by way of the twenty-three thousand we have sitting in communications already?
Sure, um, yeah, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, everyone can hear me this time?
Yes.
All right, okay. Yes, so basically, uh, the uh coming up, we wanted to focus more on on that as far as life interpretation and in translations. And that was um a a main reason for um why uh we were proposing this uh position, uh multilingual uh community services coordinator. So it's multifaceted in in the sense that the person's um, uh, primary responsibility would be kind of to uh focus on the help desk, the uh three-one-one system, um, the online support tickets that come in and make sure that that process is moving as efficiently as possible. And um, you know, that the public support tickets and uh calls are being answered in a very timely fashion and being directed um in the best way possible, especially as our technology improves. Um, you know, we're working very in uh very close conjunction with uh IT, uh especially on improvements on uh three-one-one and and website. Um, and a uh hopefully a new support ticket system that will be more uh user intuitive, more easy to uh navigate. Um, the multilingual aspect comes in uh with with this position, this proposed position in that, you know, we do get um a traffic, uh foot traffic and callers that uh are not English-speaking uh or have difficulties in in English as as a primary language. Um, it could be their second or third language. So we want to, you know, um, make sure that we are able to uh communicate effectively with with everyone that comes in so that we can provide everyone the, the, the level of customer service, um, you know, that, that should be there. Um, uh, to the best of our capability. And this multilingual person would be able to translate flyers, they would be able to uh, you know, just be a phone call away or even in in the building, um, you know, when people come in uh to be able to, to help uh anyone that comes in. Um, you know, look, looking for information on on a wide variety of things. And then in in our, our budget, we also uh included support for that position. Um, you know, especially with uh video recordings, uh especially uh maybe if this person's on vacation. You know, we don't want that uh service to be interrupted. And um, even even now, we have a a subscription to uh an interpreter service for our three-one-one lines. So when somebody come, calls into three-one-one and it's um understood that, okay, this person is having trouble speaking English. Uh, it could be Spanish or it could be anything else. Um, you know, with a, with a few buttons, the the three-one-one operators are able to connect that person to a a third-party interpreter. And um, you know, we're able to address um, you know, communications needs uh for that. So in in a nutshell, that's kind of uh what we were exploring, um, you know, with this position uh as well as um, you know, with the different services that we can provide in other languages.
Well, man, have you done any legwork when it comes to, you know, for more hearing impaired, visually impaired, closed caption type things like, you know? I, I, so I I think there's value in what Shemaine is proposing, but I don't know, cost-wise, like, for instance, like if we have money sitting on our budget or how we can look at that citywide, like, do you have any, you know, data to that to point to what that might look like? Um, because again, I think there's certainly, it certainly speaks an important need for us.
I don't have the quotes in front of me, but I do have some notes, um, you know, that I took as we were researching this uh past, past several weeks, the past few months. So I believe according to my notes, uh, if we wanted to do sign language, that one quote showed that it was about a hundred twenty-five dollars per hour with a one-hour minimum. Um, for live, live interpretation for scheduled events like city council meetings would be ninety dollars per hour. Uh, and this is just an approximate. Um, I think we reached out to two or three vendors. Um, so, you know, we can, we can still do further research and see, you know, if there's any better costs. Um, so, yeah, live, so we're looking about about ninety dollars per hour for interpretation. It's about a dollar seventy-nine for live interpretation of things like three-one-one calls, uh, city hall visitors that come in. There's obviously a setup fee for a lot of these. Uh, this one vendor was three hundred dollars for setup fee. I did some math. If we did, I just, just kind of as I was listening to the meeting, if we, if we did uh uh about nine thousand minutes of council meetings per year, if if we do the math, but, you know, average of three hours per meeting. Um, meeting about every week or uh every, every, maybe missing a few weeks here and there for work sessions, legislative sessions. That equals about nine thousand minutes. So if we wanted to kind of um approximate, you know, two to three dollars per minute for some sort of live uh subtitling, um, I think that, that would probably be a good ballpark to start with. And then sign language, I'm not sure city council wants sign language for every single meeting. If that's what's being proposed or if it's kind of like a, you know, per request, um, you know, or as needed, as requested. Um, but that would be about a hundred twenty-five dollars based on one quote that we saw per hour.
So the, when you mentioned about the per minute for the closed caption, like, what was the total cost, you would think, if you, based on your assessment?
For live closed captioning, um, live interpretation, I think it's I I couldn't remember if live interpretation is voice interpretation or captioning, but this was ninety dollars per hour. And I'll have to look uh more into if, as far as uh live subtitling, if that's a different rate or if that's about the same.
And do we have um city funds budgeted for these types of services kind of citywide? Like, I mean, I'm thinking like, does that have to be like, I mean, obviously, we could look at it from a portion of our communications budget, but I'm thinking kind of citywide is probably a benefit to the whole city. So is there, is there funds to that end that are kind of allocated?
I don't think there, there may not be enough funds, uh, es- especially in in our budget for doing it for every single meeting um for, for its entirety. I think the, the way we proposed um our budget was um kind of an estimated on as needed, um, you know, uh, sort of basis. Um, but I'll have to look at it again as as far as, you know, if we were approximating, I don't know, eight thousand, nine thousand minutes. I don't know if um, you know, we have enough for all of that or if we would have to, you know, look into other ways to supplement that.
And I think, and Ben, if you, if you look at it this way, we have twenty-three thousand, we can always, we allocate money out of Gemma Fund. I'm sure there's money that's available uh for funding for additional, you know, UCG and coverage.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see this kind of a citywide.
I certainly would too. I I've been, you know, I've been agreeing, I've been, you know, moving forward with that, but uh but that, I I have a question, Moment. You said something about um the three-one-one call center. Um, you focused. the three one one call center. Um, you focused on that, on the help desk, and you want this coordinator to do that. Will this be an ask me bargain agreement position that this will be a third position?
No, this would be a management position to kind of oversee the processes of uh, three one one and the support ticket system. More uh, the backend, making sure that things are running smoothly, efficiently. Uh, things are changing so, you know, so quickly, uh, especially nowadays with new information, whether it's COVID related or new new resources, new programs. Um, we're working with all the departments. And uh, you know, the the front desk needs to know kind of everything. Well, you know, especially at at the high level of of, you know, uh, what every department's doing. Um, so this person would kind of uh, be overseeing overseeing that process, improving the processes of information going back and forth, um, working with the departments to make sure that we have the latest information. Um, yeah, going basically, uh, that would be the summary of that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Warrior, are you on tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Is there funding uh, in other areas in case that we need to implement this uh, coverage for city council meetings to have someone to um, oversee the the bilingual and also not only that, but to uh, do the uh, hearing impaired as well?
There's money in the in the in the general fund. Um, and uh, you know, there's always uh, opportunities for these if we it for to get grant funding, but that would not, that's not guaranteed.
Okay. Why I don't want to guarantee, I don't want to look into grants. I mean, if we do this, I would like to see this implemented because there has been a need for uh, the coverage. I just wanted to make sure that we have enough in the general fund to, if we run out of funding in the city council budget of twenty three thousand, that we can always uh, reallocate money from the general fund.
We can.
All right, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
We uh, we had, I had said at the beginning in in my letter to Chair Allett that we're going to be um, keeping council abreast of the underspend in our personnel budget every time we come with a a reallocation request in the new year. So I'm confident that um, if you use the pool of money in your budget to start this and we determine uh, we we need to allocate additional funds to keep it going for the full year, we can do that. Um, and I think it's a a very worthwhile use of the money, but we have enough to get it started and and then could reallocate more as needed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, moment.
Yes, thanks, moment.
No problem.
Any other questions pertaining to um, that proposed amendment from Shemane?
Yes, the only question is if if we wanted to put a number to that, would we be able to when it's time to offer an amendment?
Well, she had forty thousand, which I think the challenge is
We don't need any money. We don't, we don't need any money, Mr. Majors, in that because we have twenty three thousand, and as the mayor stated, we don't need to put additional forty thousand dollars in our funding.
Well, what I'm not sure Shemane knew when she proposed it is that we have not spent what was in our communications budget. So that has not been, that's been sitting in there, but it's been unused.
Well, we did, you know, a couple of years ago, we did use some of the money for some upgrades in the IT, so, but we do have twenty three thousand to make. I'm sorry, Mr. Majors, I have an additional question.
I said, okay, I said, okay.
But I mean, true to reform, the the amendment that she proposed was to increase by forty thousand. So that's just being clear, the amendment. Um, the last amendment that um, Councilmember Daniels proposed also had to do with the CSAs. Um, I did respond back to her with kind of some qualification on that, but um, she proposed, I would like the CSA's role to be defined before it's funded. So she likes, she wants to remove the CSA from the budget and not reallocate the funds to anything until the role becomes developed. Um, I did respond to her that unfortunately, if we take the allocation away, the the positions go away. Um, so they're, they would not exist in the budget. Um, but I do think the um, amendment that Councilmember Green proposed, I think, better probably speaks to on the idea that being a pilot program as well, but that's something that um, I'll happily introduce as a as a motion and uh, since a moment, second, if we can second that, put that up for a vote as well. Um, are there any questions based on that particular amendment? Okay, now, prior to suspending rules to talk about the budget, are there any other um, budget related questions that anyone would like to pose now, um, while we're in uh, the suspended rule portion of the meeting? Um, to either the mayor or uh, Mark or Neil or anything like that from procedural standpoint. Um, just to reiterate, if any of the amendments um, pass, um, we may have to take a quick recess should there need to be some configuration of the budget on the part of Neil, and I'm sure um, Erica as well as they as they look at that. So I'm just kind of putting that out there so someone understands that that might be the case uh, once we vote on any amendments.
Yes, um, so as I, as I mentioned it in in caucus ahead of the meeting, some of the information that I received, some of the questions that I received answers to, uh, I did get earlier today and, you know, was working. So there may be two amendments that I would like to offer, but I haven't had uh, the time to address them since I wasn't, I I received the information earlier today. Um, but I will, I I I guess I'll a- attempt to um, to offer them, or I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss them during a, during the the current suspension because it, again, trying to flesh them out on the fly has been, um, said I I was trying to do it, but I had work obligations. Um, I guess one, um, again, had to do with the an adjustment in the communications budget within the uh, Bureau of Police. Um, because again, I wasn't, uh, that was, there was eighty, it went from five thousand, eight hu- five thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars to eighty nine thousand, three hundred dollars in uh, the current proposed budget. Um, some of my concerns with that is exactly what are, what are we looking to do? And if there is a better uh, use of those funds somewhere else in the budget, uh, particularly, uh, I know, uh, some of what had been discussed previously with additional information, uh, excuse me, additional funds to uh, either building or in housing or um, you know, to to do some additional uh, demolition. Or if we're looking to uh, keep funds in uh, the police budget, if we could do even a uh, some sort of uh, buyback program, uh, you know, gun buyback program, as I think we're all experiencing uh, and and witnessing a lot of the uh, uh, increase in in shootings in the city of Harrisburg. Uh, additionally, uh, if there are um, dollars not being spent on uh, potentially not being spent on uh, community service. Um, hold on, let me check if I get the correct name, the community service aid positions. Um, some of that funds could even be used for some of that. I think we're all, you know, seeing some of the the violence that is in in our city. Uh, and uh, you know, working with the police to get some weapons off the street. Um, could also be a a a use of those funds. Um, again, I I think those were some of the concerns that I did have. Uh, additionally, um, I guess, more policy than um, budget on some of the additional management positions, which I had, you know, raised an issue with. If we're going to have these additional management positions, uh, yeah, I think the mayor is committing to making more information accessible, but uh, if you're looking at some of what, uh, since they were looking at the model from other cities, including Lancaster for the community service aids, some of what Lancaster has also done is put some of their uh, citizen complaint forms or even data in a uh, an easily, an easy accessible uh, format, as well as some other cities have a lot of their, you know, crime apps, crime statistics on their website. So again, um, you know, one of the cries that I think us on council have made is what we've heard from the public. You know, particularly, I I want to focus on what uh, council, some of the the data that we were asking to receive um, didn't come until uh, you know, several uh, attempts to get that. And then the format that it came in was uh, a little bit uh, difficult to uh, to even be able to um, you know, I I guess, analyze, uh, since they were in uh, some form of a PDF. So again, if we're going to be looking to bring on um, the technical services manager, the record management uh, manager, a substation manager. Um, some of these positions, as well as uh, I think to Councilwoman Daniels' point about the community service aides, look, you know, further defining some of those roles would be, you know, helpful if we're going to um, you know, make some changes. And then we're also seeing um, a increase in the in the number of captains as we're looking to make some changes. I I think I understand why that, why that's occurring. Um, but again, we want to make sure that, you know, if we are going to be allocating additional dollars uh, in the police budget, that there are um, some tangible um, changes from the customer service piece that we could uh, could see in that budget. In that department, excuse me. And lastly, one of the other changes I was looking at was, I I think I had proposed this in in email, so um, making some changes in city arborist budget. Uh, yeah, I think it was agreed to during our um, meeting that they wouldn't spend um, the thirty eight, I think it's thirty eight. I I can't remember the
Right.
Eight, thirty eight, nine or thirty eight, uh, but there was, went from thirty thousand up to thirty eight, two, five, two, I believe, was the um, was the number. Uh, but if we reallocated uh, some of those funds um, out of that, since it is the host fee, I mean, we could allocate it to, you know, additional uh, tree uh, removal, some uh, additional work to go to the uh, towards the um, uh, greenhouse or any other uh, projects since we're, you know, working on the host feed. That is one of the other ones that I wanted to uh, flesh out. I think I received an assurance that they were only going to do a two percent step increase, but um, that only deals with that portion, but that that those funds are still on our budget and uh, we could potentially utilize those for another purpose. But those were just a a few of the items. Um, that got some clarification on earlier today that didn't get a chance to fully flesh out an amendment. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, council members. If I have the permission to speak really quick on one of the things that uh, Councilmember Mayor's uh, said regarding communication, so he can get some clarification on that. Um, just so you're aware, that is uh, that the city is planning to potentially provide each police officer their own cellphone. The cellphones will be free, uh, but the service, we all going to have to pay on a monthly basis. That's why you see that big jump from five thousand to eight thousand.
Okay, so that was not my understanding how those funds were going to be used when uh, it was Deputy Chief Moody. Um, when that was brought up on on those funds. I'll take a quick look in the budget as well. Thank you for that clarification, um, Eric.
You're welcome.
Mr. Allen. Thank you, you're back this.
You stepped away. I do have a question, though.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bowery.
For the mayor, I just wanted to thank you for your pledge and um, thank Chair Allett for sharing it with um, council members and the public. I appreciate that. Um, I just had a question regarding um, the third point about the public safety work sessions. I just was curious to know if you would be interested in providing um, various mediums for residents to um, share their public comments. I know we've talked about it before, and Chair Green had um, what seemed to be a good use of varied mediums during the public safety virtual town hall meetings where residents could either offer uh, written comments or they could call in. So I just wanted to know um, if you were open to providing various mediums for residents to participate.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowers. Uh, yes, I feel very strongly that uh, we could do more to make it easier for residents to participate. Uh, my pledge was that I will, the administration will participate in whatever work session Councilwoman Green uh, wishes to put together. And I would, I would support the ability to make in-person comments and uh, other things, but that's really uh, a council decision. It's it's your, it's it's really your format for the work session. But uh, I agree with you. I think there's more we can do to make public comment easier. And uh, uh, our willingness is to uh, participate and to help uh, explain to you and the public, uh, the process for the new positions, advertise the new positions, discuss them in greater detail, and make adjustments to the job descriptions as necessary.
Thank you. I I look forward to seeing how um, the CSA task force evolves, and then I look forward to um, working together to determine the best use of um, un- unspent funds. So thank you.
Um, I would, sorry, I just stepped out for just a quick bit. I mentioned before council started. Um, I'm home solo tonight, and the dog had reacted, so I needed to make sure I could quiet him. So I apologize. Um, Wes, I wanted to come back to um, your two points. Are there specific amendments that you want us to to consider based on um, you, some of your thoughts at this time? I just want to make sure that, because now would be the time for us to be able to um, look at that and um, and see if we need to kind of discuss that further. I just want, I don't want to let that go um, unset or undone at this point.
Right, yeah. So um, I I I'm just taking a, got an opportunity. I'm looking at some of the lines in the police bureau budget, so um, just uh, give me a second here. Um, okay, so there isn't a, uh, there's an equipment line item for communication. That's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is uh, four, five, three, zero, three, nine. Um, is that the line for the um, for the the uh, cellphones for the officers? Because they they, the line that I was initially uh, raising the question about uh, is uh, line four, two, zero, zero, one, zero, which is the advertising line, which is going up. Um, and that was the budget for communications. It comes under the communications line. Um, that went to from the five thousand, two hundred eighty dollars to the eighty nine uh, three, three hundred.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, so I I I did misunderstanding that side, so you're you're correct. Um, that we are adding actually about eighty, eighty thousand dollars in communications and another uh, in the general expenses line item for the police. And I thought that's why, that's what you were talking about. Uh, but the advertising is exactly what the chief has mentioned to you. Uh, that is the plans for the five thousand that is there. And then also regarding the a hundred and uh, the hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that is actually for radios, for the new CSAs and the um, um, overseers of them. So, so that's, it, the radios cost, you know, quite a bit. Um, that's separate. Hopefully that makes sense.
So.
Oh, okay, because I'm 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 still a little confused because I think those line, the line is in communications is under advertising. So we're, the advertising money is going towards radios. Is that my understanding?
No, sorry. So the advertising line item, that is actually going to go under um, for recruitment. Well, and like I mentioned, that is exactly what the uh, chief has mentioned to you in the past, probably, that is for recruitment. Uh, being able to hire more people and bring forth uh, maybe consultants to be able to communicate this with the people as well. Uh, the lane item with the four, five, which is the equipment, um, equipment communications for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That is for the radios.
Now, Mr., um, Erica, is that recruitment for the whole, the eighty five thousand, one hundred is for the whole year?
Um, May, will you mind explaining a little bit better on that? But that uh, there is something more into that. Um, and I think
So this is, so this is Mark. That, sorry, Mayor, if you get, I didn't, go ahead, Mayor.
I, yeah, you you can go, Mark, but I will just say that one of the things that the police uh, is looking to do and that we discussed uh, with the FOP in terms of uh, recruitment is to move away from the um, consortium testing. And in fact, to develop our own test and to uh, to put that out there as a means of uh, hopefully drawing more applicants. Um, right now, the way the consortium testing works, uh, the the city tends to be um, we we lose a lot of the collective pool to other uh, agencies, and um, it's just not producing enough enough candidates. Um, developing our own test, uh, getting the word out about that test and uh, advertising is a part of uh, is a part of that transition to uh, to sort of moving away from the consortium.
And 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 are there a a number of cities that do that, or is this just something that Or is this just something that we'd be looking to do in terms of moving away from the consortium model? Because I think, I guess that's so that, you know, communities benefit from not having to have their, their own test.
I don't know if there's anyone on from police at the moment who could, could speak to it, but I
Is Blake or Commissioner on?
Blake, if you have the ability to, to ask for, you know, Sorenson or Moody to, to, to jump on, that would be great. But I know that, because we've discussed it in our, in our meetings with FOP, and I know that the FOP and the command staff both feel that we will get more and better applicants if we move away from the consortium testing. But it hasn't, it's not currently working. And we need to put more of an emphasis on, on, on advertising if we're going to fill some of our open positions.
And Allentown is doing a little bit of this already. We were going for a site visit for their civil service for police. They've moved to a different recruiting method for people that are already through the academy. And that would require here a change in civil service rules we've been discussing with, within the FOP labor management meetings and management.
Mr. Major.
Waiting for someone from law enforcement to join, is that?
I have to step away for one second. I will be right back.
Chair Allen, I, I think Neil could speak a little further to, to, to how this interacts with the civil service. Neil, I believe what the police would, would like to try and do is to see if they could appeal to Act one twenty certified folks. And we can't do that under the current civil service rules. Can you, can you describe that?
I will. The funny thing is during the long pregnant pause, I did, and I thought everyone was listening to me, so.
No, you want to hold that thought because have to step away for a minute. So I know that's something he'd asked specifically. So hold that thought until he pops. I did want to circle back around. Something else that had been brought up, both from council members last week that has not been proposed into a specific amendment, had to do with the salary for the finance director. And there was some discussion back and forth. Mark had responded back that they do not feel at this time that the, that they are not getting applicants at the salary that they proposed. And quite honestly, the other side of the coin is that since it's not a position that's going to be filled as of January first, should there be, there's some discretion there that they can use because the budget is proposed as is with the salary. But if the, if they don't start in January one, there's some potential room there. So that's something that was discussed. Wanda, you need to mute. There she is. Oh, Councilmember Majors, are you back?
Yes, I'm back. My apologies.
No, you're fine. I just, Neil had come on to explain a little bit about that. And I wanted to, I told him to pause until he got back because I want to make sure you heard as well. Neil, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, so at labor management with the FOP and with civil service, we've been discussing taking this model that Allentown is using to have a second civil service list of people that are already qualified under Act one twenty. And we were attempting to coordinate a field trip up there with representatives of the police bureau and this office and maybe HR in order to, you know, basically observe how they've put it together. But they have found, as have others, that the consortium doesn't necessarily work for everybody. I believe Lancaster may have left their consortium as well. So different ones do their own testing, just like our fire does their own testing now. It's really just a matter of resources and how you allocate them. The city did its own for years for police and moved to the consortium. But it is, it is an important change that has to be made. It requires a change in the civil service rules, which we're targeting to bring down in January, so that they can proceed with this ability to test on their own and bring in folks that are not starting from scratch going to the academy. I'm not sure that answers your question.
Wes, did that confirm any of your questions to provide at least more insight?
Yeah, that, that, that helps with some of those, the questions. Thank you.
Before we go on, is there any specific amendments that anyone would like to make at this point? Are we still waiting for? May we still waiting for anyone from law enforcement to join or no?
DC Moody said that he was going to try and call in. Would take a minute.
Okay, we can wait a few minutes. Are there any other budget related questions that we want to cover at this time while we wait for Captain Moody to join? We will pause for silent reflection.
We'll wait for our other council member. Mr. Majors.
Yes, he's arrived. Wave to people. There's the wave.
Is he a year old?
He is thirteen months old. Yeah, yeah. So he's, he's off, he's off for his reset. He's off for recess. He will, he says goodbye.
So Vice President Allen, I just talked to DC Moody. The folks that were involved in that and getting that number with regard to the move away from the consortium are not available right now. He can have the information tomorrow, he said, but in order to have specific questions about that, he can rely on, on Sorenson for that.
Okay. And so we had Neil speak a little bit to that in terms of consortium there too. So are there any additional questions or amendments that anyone would like to propose or discuss at this time?
Yeah, so, so the only thing, piece that I wanted to discuss was, was moving a, a, a portion of the arborist. I guess, I don't know, we, I guess, moving a portion of the funding for, for the arborist. And I guess we'd be moving that into contracted services so that we could potentially take down a few additional trees within the, the tree program. And also, just in terms of the tree program, President Williams, I may have missed this. Did we ever get a response or the list of the, the trees that had been taken down?
No, we didn't. I'm sorry, we didn't.
Wes, is there, is there a dollar amount that you're looking at in terms of?
I'm trying to make, I just want to make sure that the decrease is in line with what the proposed two percent step increase would be, which and I guess, yeah, the two percent increase, I think, would take the, the position from thirty thousand to thirty thousand six hundred, if my math is correct. So that would then lead to a, now I gotta do math on the fly here. That will lead to a move of seven thousand six hundred fifty two dollars out of the arborist and move it over into contracted services. Or maybe even, you know, a split between that and communications. I think for me, I want to also help get the word out on the program and maybe make some of the, the forms a little bit more accessible. Or create a form so that residents can fill out and create a, a process by which residents have some certainty on how their, I guess, requests for services through that program are addressed.
And just to be clear, Councilmembers, I think you're proposing doing that within the host fee, right?
Correct. That's within the host fee. That's within the host fee.
So there is a line item in the host fee for contracted services. Yeah, and communications, yes. I'm just helping Erica, she's
Yeah, yep, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I want to make sure I'm, I'm trying to keep, I don't want to move funds outside of a certain program. I'm trying to, but yeah, that would be the change there.
Just for kind of clarity, is there a recommend, recommended amount that you want to see go into communications as opposed to contracted services?
Yeah, so I would, I would take, I would take a thousand dollars over to communications to make the communications budget, ten thousand dollars. And then I would then move the remaining six thousand six hundred fifty two dollars into the contract services on.
Okay, so I'm doing that. And that is, that seven thousand six hundred fifty two proposals coming out of salary, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be the personnel line item for the arborist. And let me see if I have it right. Okay, it's in the host fee fund, and that would be on page one fifty seven of the document.
So your proposal is to give two percent of the thirty thousand of her salary, which you get thirty thousand six hundred?
Right, she would get the two percent as what was discussed during budget hearings. The remaining money, which is in that fund, which is, would have been that seven thousand six hundred and fifty two dollars, would then be split to one thousand to communications, as you know, we're trying to, looks like the communications budget has been increased significantly to help with the word on some of the programs that are offered through the host fee. And then the additional funds would go to contracted services in an attempt to be able to assist additional city residents who would be eligible for one of the, the programs, which I believe those programs. The program that's currently fun, being funded would be the, the tree removal. The senior tree program, I believe, is the one coming out of the host fee. So that would go so that there could be additional, you know, contracts with tree services to remove trees for seniors who qualify and have their trees, to have their trees either, I guess, trimmed, removed, et cetera.
So I think we are going to have some updated numbers from Dave Baker shortly about
I am on, I'm on the line here if you guys need.
Perfect. Do you have those numbers for the senior trees and low income tree program that we've been able to do this far this year? And I think we have some pretty good numbers, probably numbers that exceed in recent history the amount of trees taken down in both programs. So go ahead, Dave.
All right, so to date for 2020, our, our city arborist has had forty two senior trees removed, removed slash trimmed, and that is counting, there are a couple that are actually in process now. We averaged about fourteen hundred dollars per tree. Understand, that's, that's some trees, you know, costs us seven, eight hundred dollars and other trees, you know, can cost almost three thousand dollars. So the two numbers I have for the senior trees are, as I said before, we're looking at forty two trimmed and removed and fourteen hundred and twenty eight dollars fifty seven cents per tree. And as far as the low income tree program that our, our city arborist is, is heading off, we are in the midst of starting with multiple different contractors. And we, we feel confident we can actually get the entirety of the monies that we were reallocated for that spent for this year. You know, we're doing our best with that as well.
Dave, I've asked for a list of the trees that you've taken down in the name, in the name of the resident. I haven't received that. Could you possibly make sure I get that information?
I absolutely will. I just, I got the amount and the dollar amount later this afternoon. And I plan on sending that over to, to all of council as soon as I get addresses put down with those two. But it's, it's definitely in the works. It will happen, yes.
As well as the money contractors, that you have many different contractors that you mentioned.
And just follow, Erica, are you crunching the numbers on Councilmember Major's amendment, just to check math and make sure that was consistent?
Um, well, the thing is that there's a few changes that are going to have to take place with that, with that salary change. Because it's going to, it's going to go down, obviously, and it's going to be about six hundred dollars from the thirty thousand to thirty thousand six hundred. And then there's the FICA that I have to calculate as well, which is being calculated right now. I did want to mention though, however, and they've could clarify this if I'm correct, but I believe when we were in the budget meetings, the reason we actually did do the about eight thousand dollar increase in that position was one, because that position's hourly, so they don't get paid thirty thousand dollars. They, they get paid by the hour. So depends on their, on their hours as well. And I think that we were thinking of increasing her hours as well. And currently she's at like twenty four dollars an hour. So I think Dave should be able to speak on that, I believe, because he is supervising her, if I'm correct. But I believe that was why we actually increased it to that much, to then also probably bring her up a dollar, you know, in her salary instead of, you know, the, you know, six hundred dollars is, you know, but, but yeah, so.
Yeah, that, I think, at that, at that point, we, if I remember correctly, I think Mr. Woolley addressed that by saying that there may not be an increase in, in the hours. And he can, he or Dave can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's the only reason I was looking to make the adjustment at that point because that was directly from conversations we had. And Dave and or Mark can correct me if I'm wrong.
So I'll defer to Dave, but what we're trying to do is increase the amount of trees that we are able to identify as dangerous or in need of trimming. And that takes time. And so in order to do that, we have to, we had to increase her hours to be able to do that. And so while there is a slight increase in terms of hourly rate, her hours, the, the amount of that eight thousand is really an increase in hours, not and, and because we want to identify more trees and take the, the dangerous trees out of, basically take them out, off the street or out of the parks. And we want to be able to clear sign, signage and lights. And we, we need her to be able to identify that so we can send our contractors and or employees to do that. The only way we're going to be able to do that is we increase her hours. So that.
Okay, so then, okay, then the question I have would be, how, where are we in terms of? I guess, I don't know if it can be answered this evening, so I may want to adjust an amendment accordingly. But where are we in terms of the, the hours currently being spent against the thirty thousand for her for, for the year, right? Because if you say we haven't gotten to the thirty thousand yet, we're, I don't know when the last pay, the last pay run for the budget, I believe, was eleven thirteen, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, but we have just recently had been able to, one, procure the services of the, 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 the tree companies. But so we had to, really, she had to go out and identify each tree. So the hours now have probably gone, have gone up. And I'm going to defer to Dave on that. So there was a time between, we had the discussion and when we had the RFP and when she was working and identifying trees. But I'll defer to Dave on that.
So, so I guess the, the best answer I can give you guys is luckily, everyone reallocated or voted for the reallocation of a quarter million dollars for the low income tree program. And as Mark was saying, because of that, the, the arborist has a quarter million dollars for the uh low income tree program. And and as Mark was saying, because of that, the the arborist uh has has spent exponentially more time uh working on that program. And uh and and if the budget passes, uh we'll have an extra hundred thousand dollars on top of the host fee money to continue the low tree per uh low tree uh low income tree removal program, which that individual has to oversee. So that 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 was our our thought process behind the the eight thousand or the hourly increase, I should say.
And Dave, I don't, you know, I really don't have a problem with um increasing her hours, but then I have a problem with the city being in violation because she's a part-time employee. She's not supposed to work more than twenty nine hours per week. The city would be responsible for paying her benefits then if she works those additional hours. So are you telling me that she's going to be working more than twenty nine hours a week? And if she is, then should we not consider hiring her on a full-time basis?
Um so I I did talk to HR on the they did uh let me know that the maximum she could work would be thirty hours uh per week.
Right.
And and we uh, you know, that would be an extra day every single week that, you know, for the entire year that we we'd have her working. That that's what we're hoping uh could be, you know, enough time to to get this job done. Uh the the individual in the position right now is is really interested in the position because obviously their their love for the the uh, you know, the trees and the nature aspect and and, you know, just all everything to do with the the green space in the city. But, you know, they are definitely interested in a part-time position, not in a full-time. So um I'm thinking, I mean, right now, I think she works a thirty-hour uh week for the most part, whether we pay for it or not. And we're we're just trying to basically uh put the compensation where where I'm I'm hoping it's fair for.
Um but I've actually documents in uh identifying the hours that she worked.
So if I may uh jump in really quick, um like I mentioned before, she's currently at twenty four dollars and four cents. With a two percent increase, we were looking at that she would be at a twenty four dollars and fifty two cents. And then we did um the the math, you know, doing thirty hours um per week for fifty two weeks. Brings ups brings us up to the thirty eight thousand dollars that you see in front of you. Uh currently, she's actually, as of last paycheck, uh the thirty thousand hasn't actually, she already met that. That budget. Um so technically speaking, she shouldn't be working because, you know, the budget is is a thirty thousand and eighty uh and ninety eight and ninety eight um with with what she's worked so far this year. So we still have one more payroll to go, which I'm going to assume is going to be another, you know, seven, eight hundred dollars, maybe depending on how many hours she's working right now. But but yeah, so so that's how we got to the thirty eight thousand dollars. It's a a twenty four dollars and four cents times the two percent increase. Plus the thirty hours that she's going to be working instead of twenty four hours or, you know, whatever hours that she's been working right now. Um brings you to the thirty eight thousand dollars that you see in front of you.
Okay, well, this just confused me a little bit more because the conversation we had last week was not to that extent, but thank you for the clarification, Erica. So um yeah, okay.
If we're hiring on a part-time basis and she's only supposed to work thirty hours a week. I I just, as I requested before, and this is the third time I'm I will request it, I'd like to see some documentation about how many hours she spent working during the three days that she's here. Because I'm concerned because she's working overtime. That's what I've been told, is she's working overtime. And she should not be working overtime because then we are in violation. I will say that again, because then we, as a municipality, should be paying her benefits. So now where are we going to go with this um? As a part-time or are we going to restrict ourselves to the thirty hours as she was hired originally at?
One, are you saying she's working more than thirty hours a week right now?
Well, she just indicated that she's not, no, she's not working more than thirty, but Erica says she's went over to thirty thousand dollars that we allocated for that part-time position.
Right.
Because because we budgeted only for her to work twenty four hours in the year. However, because of all the time that she's been spending the past month or so uh reviewing the trees and everything like that, that's why there there's a little jump in the in the budget because of that. So hopefully that this does that make sense? President.
It makes sense, but I'm I I'm.
I believe President Williams is explaining that we're violating federal and state employment laws in the manner in which we're handling this employee on a variety of fronts.
We need to make a determination where we're going to continue.
HR should be in the discussion.
Right.
Terms of compliance.
So so where are we at though, Neil? Are we going to continue on with the thirty hours? Are we going to go above that? Or what are we going to do with this employee? I, like I said, I asked for justification for the part-time that she was working. If she worked, because I I was under the understanding that she was working additional hours, and that's why they were allocating the money for eight thousand two hundred fifty two thousand for the twenty one budget.
Right, because we we budgeted her at twenty four hours, not thirty in twenty twenty.
So the proposed in twenty twenty one is budgeting her at thirty hours.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. Correct.
Though I guess the question is, is are we confident that it restricts her to that thirty? Or do we think that it's going to go more than, I think that, I mean, that's probably a management thing that needs to happen to ensure that she doesn't go over if that's what's budgeted. I guess that's that's what we need to understand before we propose any amendment one way or the other is exactly what we're going to be managed towards.
Exactly, but I don't want to see us doing additional eight thousand two hundred fifty two dollars and she actually going to be making thirty eight thousand, thirty eight two hundred fifty two for the year. When we hired her as a part-time basis with a salary of thirty thousand.
Her salary is not thirty thousand. She's hourly. No, she's hourly.
Well, when we were first made aware of this, it was supposed to be at a thirty thousand dollar level.
Yeah, I mean.
Hourly or not, she's going over that.
Like I mentioned, in uh when we were preparing the uh twenty twenty budget, we were proposing to give her a salary of twenty four dollars at twenty twenty to twenty four hours uh a year. Um and that brought us to that thirty thousand dollar um salary that you see there. However, that's not a salary. She's hourly. So depending on the hours that she works, that's going to to change, obviously, the um the the amount that she makes throughout the year. Um and that's why this year in twenty twenty one, we will, we are requesting that extra eight thousand dollars. So that way, if she does this, uh i- if if it is something that we need for her to work thirty hours instead of twenty four or twenty hours, the money's available there um for us to to utilize.
Just need to see a justification of what she's doing in the additional monies.
Uh let me let me just say that the city is happy to manage the position to whatever level council would like it to be. So if you want to say that it should be thirty thousand six hundred dollars and we, she can only work uh uh, you know, the hours that uh add up to that in twenty twenty one, we'll make that happen. If uh if you want her to work more like thirty hours a week, we will also make that happen. So uh I have no problem with Mr. Major's uh uh amendments if if that's if that's what you want. I think that the what they're trying to say is that it may mean we'll get fewer trees removed, but uh we will manage the position to whatever level of uh uh of total funding you want to give it. Okay, so if you want that to be thirty thousand six hundred and move forward with Councilman Major's amendments, we will make sure that she does not work more hours over the course of next year that uh that that would, you know, so that it doesn't exceed that amount.
Well, don't misunderstand me, Mayor. Don't misunderstand me. I don't have a problem with her working fifty hours. And I want to choose remove for the senior citizens in the city of Harrisburg. That's why we reallocated additional money. But I want to make sure that she is doing her job. That she's removing the trees and she's going out to the the homes of the the residents and she is doing just that, to identifying what trees are dead and what should be removed.
Well, that's a different conversation. So uh happy to help facilitate that conversation as well. I think the parks maintenance team is saying that uh they feel comfortable with uh thirty hours, budgeting for thirty hours of work a week, um which is how they made that calculation. Um we can budget for a few hours than that if that's what council wants. Uh and if what's really an issue here is that you want uh more of an understanding of what the job's doing, we can do that outside of the budget.
And the reason I say that, Mayor, is because I have several residents in the city of Harrisburg who has contacted me regarding her their interaction with her and not, you know, completing the job that they requested. So I guess I do want some documentation of a justification that she is interacting and she is going out to to identify those trees.
I'm just saying we can handle it any way you'd like. Uh if the council majors can propose those amendments and we can do it that way, or we could do it a different way. I I don't think we need to uh it it's the choice is yours and we will make sure the position works uh in the manner you decide.
Okay, moving, you know, forward to that, Erica, would you just confirm the numbers per uh council member major's amendment, just to make sure we're proposing the right amount? If we're keeping it twenty four hours a week and there's just doing a two percent increase. So it's looking at that difference. If you could just confirm what that amount is, we can make sure that we're looking at that correctly.
Do you guys mind if I just uh clarify something real quick?
Yeah.
I I just don't want to mislead anyone. Uh as far as that position, uh we we are to our maximum hours and we will not be exceeding the the hours allotted from the position. So the the position will not be, you know, actively working anymore uh for this this year period.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so if I if I understand this correctly, uh councilman, um council member majors, you want a two percent me bringing that to, uh like I said, thirty thousand six hundred and moving the remainder of that money into the miscellaneous contracted services for tree removal. Pretty much. So you you don't want to make any increases or anything like that. You just want.
The proposed would have been a thousand to communications and then the remainder would have gone towards uh the contracted services. But again, this was all based upon my understanding that we had not Alex spent the full amount for the position and that the increase was only reflective of a two percent increase. A a two percent increase was going to be uh would get us to that thirty thousand six hundred dollars, not the thirty eight thousand uh two hundred and fifty two dollars, which is being proposed. So if you could just run the calculations on that, this is amendment that I I I may offer. This was all based upon the information that was provided to us at our uh, I guess, the second uh city council uh budget session, and I'll even double-check an email just to to make sure I had that information correctly. Thank you.
And Eric, if you want to, just you can use the chat. I'm just going to confirm the number for me uh that would make for the amendment. Um the the number that he provided was seven thousand six hundred fifty two, if he was doing the math correctly. So if you just want to confirm that dollar, you can send that through the chat screen if you want.
That's good.
All right. Um any other budget-related questions? All right, here now, can I make a motion to go back into our uh continued legislative session?
In a second. Can I have a second? Thank you. We're not go we're now back into uh the legislative session. Whenever a motion to adjourn that session so we can move on to the special legislative session for today.
Ma- Madam President?
Yes.
I I believe you have to actually proceed to a vote on the budget in this in this recess session because it was the advertised meeting for the vote on the budget. The special legislative session is for the uh Act twenty one or the uh.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. Okay, for the Bill ten, Bill twenty one. Okay, the resolution. Okay.
All right, so we would move on now to 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 uh.
You're correct.
To vote on. Ordinance is for final passage. That's what we would go to.
Witness for amendment.
With amendment.
Okay.
I would, we'd ask for amendments now if they're there, so.
Right, yes. Hey, Mr. Alec, would you want to identify all the amendments up for vote? Please, we will vote for each amendment separately.
Sounds good. So for the first amendment proposed, this is the amendment per Councilmember Green. Uh this is an amendment to uh a motion to amendment to reduce the number of the CSAs uh from twelve positions down to seven positions and therefore would reduce the budget amount by their total um salaries and associated cost uh to reflect uh seven positions instead of twelve positions.
Any more questions or comments on the amendment?
Again, it's a second, correct?
I'll second it. I don't know. Are you proposing it? I'm seconding it?
Yes. He's going to propose all the motions and you and then you ask for a second. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments additionally?
Yeah, just just a question again, uh since I guess we're back on uh the record. Uh the additional funds, we aren't, there's no plan for the additional for the the revenue that won't be allocated on that personal line. This would just be an overall reduction in in the city budget. And what would and what would what is that that number reflected as?
I have two hundred and ten thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty four dollars and fifty five cents before we add on other related expenses.
What was it, Neil?
I have two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty four dollars and fifty five cents.
Yeah, that's that's, yeah, that's correct.
What I don't know is whether they have other expenses per person, which is also in the budget or not.
So decreased in the decrease from twelve to seven. Is that the final? Okay.
On salaries and
Okay.
benefits.
It will be salaries and FICA and social security, so. That's a combination of those two numbers.
Any additional questions or comments? Here now, please call the vote, Ms. Houston. Ms. Houston?
Sorry, I was speaking and I was muted. Um this is a vote on the First Amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Amendment one passes.
Moving on to the Second Amendment, Mr. Allen.
Second amendment is proposed by Councilmember uh Daniels. Um this is an amendment that would increase the Director's Social Equity salary uh to sixty five thousand dollars per year.
Any, have a second? May I have a please have a second on the motion? I mean, then amendment? Okay.
That memo fails.
That fails. Moving on to the third.
A third proposed amendment for this evening is a amendment to increase the communications manager's salary to eighty thousand dollars a year.
Have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Any questions or comments on that amendment?
Now, I do have a a question. I think it may be for um the up, hold on. Yeah, sorry, we got a a a little fussy one today. Um so the uh is it, and I I want to make sure I'm doing this correctly, if I can do this. Uh Neil, is it possible to amend an amendment or we just have to vote on it as it is being proposed?
You can make a motion to amend a proposed uh amendment. You would need a second on that. You'd vote on that first, then you'd vote on the proposed amendment.
Okay, so what I would like to do then is make an amendment to this uh this amendment. Uh hold on, let me. There we go. Uh sorry, I was holding. I had a temporary mutant instead of pushing uh to to speak fully. So I'd like to make a motion to uh amend the uh Communications Director's salary in this amendment from eighty thousand dollars to uh sixty eight thousand dollars, which would be an increase, I believe, of from $80,000 to uh $68,000, which would be an increase, I believe, of uh I gotta look at the number again. I think it's $1,305 would be the increase to take it up to from the 66. Was it 66?
965.
66, no, so 66, 965. So it would be $1,035, which would take us up to $68,000 uh for this. And um as uh was noted in the budget, this would be uh just specifically for the Communications Director uh as a uh acknowledgement of a lot of the uh the hard work and additional effort that has been placed on him through the COVID-19 crisis. Thank you.
So Mr. Majors, the, uh, Mr. Allen, as the moving person on the amendment, has to accept it.
So I just want to confirm Communication Manager and what was the amended amount to the proposed amendment?
The amended amount would be $1,035. So it would take it, it would, I would change the overall number, which would have been to $80,000 and this is changed now to uh, it would change it to 68,000, which would be a a a change of $1,035.
Got you. So I will amend the the motion that was originally uh cast from Councilmember Daniels with the amendment proposed by Councilmember Majors that would propose that the Communications Manager's salary would be increased to an annual salary of $68,000 per year. Uh, did I get that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
So Mr. Majors is making a motion. Are you second the motion?
He has to accept it first, I believe.
Yes, I'm proposing the amendment as put as amended by Councilmember Majors. I'll make that motion for that amendment's record.
And then may I have a second?
And.
Okay, any questions or comments on the amended amendment from $80,000 to $68,000?
Just a point of clarification, when we come back for final passage in between, we will have to get a calculation from Erica on the, that little piece in between for additional FICA charges.
Okay.
But and that's fine. That is for clarification purpose.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any additional questions or comments? Please call the vote, uh, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President William?
Yes.
The amendment to the original amendment has passed.
So go back to the original amendment for a vote.
So the amendment as amended, the motion would have changed the amendment to reflect the new amended version of the Communications Manager's salary of $68,000 per year.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
And I just want to comment that I took a look while we were uh, we had our rules suspended just around the budget at other manager salaries and it's still within the manager range um of uh of the salaries that are in the current city budget. So I didn't want folks to think it was just out of nowhere. It was still a uh kept us within that, those proposed ranges. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President William?
Yes.
The amendment passes.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
This would be the fourth proposed amendment. This is a, make a motion to amend the uh budget uh per Councilmember Daniels. This amendment would uh remove the funding uh for the CSAs until a rule was defined. Uh, but therefore, it's a technical amendment. I need to make a motion that would remove the CSAs uh from the proposed uh budget.
May I have a second? Amendment fails. I don't get it. I don't have, received the second, so the amendment fails, Mr. Allen.
Moving on to the fifth proposed amendment, um, this is also amendment proposed by a Councilmember Daniels that would increase the city council's communication budget by $40,000. Um, this would be a threshold that is questionable under the proposed uh budget guidelines. Um, but as due process, I will make the amendment um as proposed by Councilmember Daniels. So again, I'm making a motion to increase the city council's communication budget by $40,000 per year.
Have a second? May I have a second, please? Not hearing any. Motion fails, Mr. Allen.
And now pursuing the final proposed amendment, this is the amendment from Councilmember Majors. Um, and prior to making the motion, I did receive some update information. Um, and this would be, Erica, if you could confirm that the amount actually would be $8,238 from personnel for the host fee. Is that correct?
Yes, based on what I sent you guys, correct.
All right, thank you. So Councilmember Majors, just so you know, it's amended slightly in terms of the total amount to reflect your calculations. Um, but this is an amendment per Councilmember Majors. Uh, this is an amendment to the host fee to take uh the amount of $8,238 from salaries and personnel um and apply it to two different areas, $1,000 to communications and the remaining $7,238 to contracted services.
May I have a second, please?
Uh, second.
I would like to make to make an amendment to that amendment, please. And the reason I say that is because I I I need to have an opportunity to receive the additional information from uh Mr. Baker. I need to see uh how many trees are being taken down and whether, how many more trees need to be taken down. Can we just make an amendment that um if we find that we there, we're in need of additional funding, that we can reverse and reallocate that money back into that that particular fund?
As a technical question, I will leave to uh Neil, you go on some of that.
I want to make sure, Neil, that we are taking down the required number of trees that the neighbors in the in the city of Harrisburg are requesting.
So i- 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 it's very hard to have a motion that makes a salary contingent or or wage contingent.
Okay, fine, you're right. Okay.
So.
That's fine. We can reallocate money if there's needing.
From another area, if you wish.
Okay, we can. We can reallocate. Okay, I have a first, I mean, I have a motion that that's been passed amendment and there's a second. May I have any questions or comments on that particular motion?
Yeah, so I I'll I'll comment and I'll, look, I'm not trying to make, I wasn't, my attempt was not to make this complicated and we want to ensure that we are removing the trees. So uh with that, if this is a proper time, I will withdraw the amendment. And as was mentioned during uh our uh work session, as uh Councilmember Bowers mentioned, uh, we will be on top of the administration in terms of uh reallocations throughout the quarterly reallocations. And if it's deemed necessary, we can uh make additional adjustments. I I want the trees to come down and this is, this was not an attempt to uh make that more difficult. This was an attempt to address an issue that had been posed to us through a meeting, but further clarification was um found today. So I'll I'll respectfully withdraw that amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, motion is withdrawn. Moving on, Mr. Allen, is that all the amendments for the Bill 14 for the budget?
The amendments, um, I'd like to ask um Erica and Neil if we need to take a brief recess to confirm numbers in the budget.
We did, I do. I am math challenged most evenings, so uh we we need to, we need to address the changes in the actual order, base of the ordinance on salaries.
I think the question, uh, one question is, do you want to take the uh $209,710.54 uh reduction and simply uh reduce the amount that we're drawing down from fund balance? Uh, yes, you do. Okay, so I think Erica can make that calculation and speak to Neil and.
Yeah, Neil, I'll have this within the next two minutes, actually send over to.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take a five, we'll take a five minute recess.
Good, thank you.
Neil, are you there?
Um, can you hear me?
Yeah, I could hear you. Great. Do you want me to email you the um the amended uh budget ordinance?
Yes, but before you do it, let's talk about uh, we're on the same page. Um, what I have is that at long.
I interrupt. Neil and Erica, let me interrupt for a moment because there are people in this Zoom session that are not part of city council and they're not part of the administration. So please have an offline conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I think I have your number, Neil. Let me see if I could call you.
Moment, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm ready to get back. I'm ready to go back in.
Okay. All right, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, I'm ready. Mr. Alec.
I'll be right there. I'm just talking with Neil to confirm the full budget numbers. So give me 30 seconds.
Okay, sure.
Oh, also, I honestly, I almost I forgot about this. I may I have an additional member. It was a contingent upon one of the amendments being adopted that I wanted to offer. But I didn't know how a vote was going to go on. Councilperson Green's amendment.
Is it Mr. Majors? Is it amendment to Council Greens?
No, no, it's not an amendment to her amendment. It is another amendment within the Bureau of Police. But it was contingent upon her amendment being adopted. I didn't want to act out of turn.
Okay, thank you.
And then understanding what the overall fund balance transfer number is going to be.
Okay.
I do apologize. I am back.
Okay.
And I can report on the amended budget totals if you would like me to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alec, Mr. Majors also has an additional amendment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, no, I think I need to understand what those numbers are.
Numbers are first.
Yeah.
That's it. So I will start with the overall budget amount from line 369 in the budget. That is now seventy nine million, two hundred ninety six thousand, three hundred twenty three. In terms of the specific line item changes to the budget, I will first start with communications line 55 has been increased to two hundred fifty four thousand, five hundred fourteen, which increases line 59, which the communications total to three hundred nine thousand, eight hundred fourteen. Those are with the amendments that were adjusted to the communication salary. Moving to law enforcement. The line 141 personnel line item for law enforcement has now changed. It's decreased from nineteen million, one hundred eighty five thousand, one eighty three to eighteen million, nine hundred seventy four thousand, nine hundred ninety nine. And the total budget for law enforcement or public safety, I should say, in line 145 is now twenty one million, four hundred eighty five thousand, four hundred sixty nine. So those are the material changes to the budget per the amendments that we had passed.
Okay, Mr. Majors.
And so the full transfer and the other number that I thought we were going to receive is the additional money going into the fund balance was because that would be reflective of the councilwoman Green's amendment to reduce the number of community service aides.
Yes, so I think Neil, if I'm correcting the number, that was line 369, the total amount for the budget. Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
It's changing the general fund number. In reality, what it's not doing is not coming out of the fund balance.
Right.
Okay. Run down. There is one other number to change councilman a lot, which is line 398, which is the total proposed budget, which I'm waiting on a text from Erica to confirm that number.
You said, what line was that, Neil?
Three nine eight. It's the total for everything with those changes.
Okay, so if I'm, am I good to go? Then I just want to make sure I don't want to.
The, I'm sorry. So line 12 is going to change as well to seventy nine million, two hundred ninety six dollars and three hundred twenty three. That's a, that's a total of all the general fund expenditures. Okay. And then the total for line 398, which is a total of all the funds is one hundred million, one hundred thirty six million, three hundred seventy four thousand, nine hundred twenty eight. Does that answer your question, Neil?
Yeah, we're just trying to make sure we do all the math right here publicly. So we disclose it.
Yep. The variance, the variance that we're looking at is two hundred nine thousand dollars, seven hundred ten dollars, seven hundred and ten and fifty four cents.
Okay, so then the the additional amendment that I was looking to propose, and again, I guess I'll give some explanation as to why I was looking to this. So per Chairwoman Green's amendment, we've reduced the overall number of community service aides from 12 to seven. So my understanding is that's going to be reflective of one, essentially one community service aide in each policing district. With that being said, and the budget does include a director, the new budget includes both a director of community relation and engagement, and also a community policing coordinator. My understanding was that both of those positions were going to be necessary because the policing coordinator would have been looking over community police officer would have been looking over and working with the 12 individuals who are the CSAs, and then you have the new captain for the community division along with the director of community relation and engagement to do that. So what I would be looking to do would be to removing at this point, the community policing coordinator from the budget that line and having the funds from that, which in total with the FICA are, let's go here, that's fifty eight, that takes it to sixty two, four thirty seven with the FICA and use that money coupled with I'm now going to do math on the fly with thirty seven, five sixty three. So it would take a hundred thousand dollars total and use that money for a for additional COVID-19 relief. So that would be a hundred thousand dollars for COVID-19 relief for city residents. So we could put additional money into the the current program with the federal government.
Wes, just so I make sure I understand the, can you just restate it in in kind of a motion form so I understand the amendment?
Okay, so the motion would be to make a a removal of from the Bureau of Police, we would remove the community policing coordinator line from the budget, and I just don't have a number associated with it on the documents that I have here available and take that money. So that would be sixty two, four thirty seven, coupled with an additional I can't do without looking at it with an additional thirty seven, five sixty three to bring a hundred thousand dollars total to provide a COVID relief program using city, a hundred thousand dollars in city funds.
So you talked about the community policing coordinator and then also the coordinator?
The community policing coordinator line.
It's fifty eight thousand.
That's fifty eight plus, and there's the fringe benefit, the FICA. So all in total, it would be a hundred. So the total number from that line, including FICA, would be sixty two, four thirty seven. And then in total, a hundred thousand dollars would then be appropriated for a COVID-19 relief program using city funds. I know we've, we have the money that we're using from CDBG to provide a a program for city residents to apply for. This would be additional funds. These would be city dollars that could be used for a a program.
Wes, so just so I understand correctly, you are proposing the salary, the total salary with FICA is a sixty two, forty, thirty seven to get to a hundred. You're looking to pool additional funds based on what we just
What we just, what we just did not take from fund balance. So that would be, and if my math serves me correct, that would be thirty seven thousand, five hundred and sixty three dollars, and that would give a hundred thousand dollars total for a city COVID-19 relief program. That's what the proposal would be.
And that thirty seven you're taking from the CSA, right?
Well, that would have been a fund balance now because now it's it would be fund balance dollars. And it would be because, again, if we have a CSA complement of seven and a community, a director of community relation and engagement, that individual would be able to oversee those seven along with the other duties assigned along with the the new community services division captain, whose responsibilities include the SRO program, if we're able to get that up and running, community policing, the CSA's HUD, and I think there's one additional I think that's a court officer as well. That would be all under that community services division, along with an analyst, the substation manager, then our director of community relations and engagement.
Councilman Majors, if I may, two, two point, one, can we confirm that the community policing coordinators twenty twenty one budget is purely out of general fund? And it's not sourced by, we just have to know whether it was sourced by something else, that that was the intention.
It is mainly general fund.
Okay. And then two, I would break it simply into two separate motions, Mr. Major. One to one to eliminate the position, one to provide a contribution to the existing program.
If I may, is the pro, or is the program that you guys talking about, Mark, is it a CDBG money?
What program? What are you talking?
They're they're talking about
The current COVID-19 relief program that opened on December ninth for residents to apply for up to five thousand dollars in assistance. I think those are all CDBG funds.
They are. They are CDGV funds and so, yeah, they are.
And Mark, do we not have additional five hundred thousand that we're going to look at a second round?
No, what we have, we have five hundred thousand for that rental assistance and utility assistance. And then there's three hundred thousand dollars to help people to buy foods and groceries.
Okay. And all the additional fundings in that?
So that the eight hundred thousand is all that's earmarked for this round.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay. So you've talked about another round, though, which and what's the other round that you will make a reference to?
No, no, I just said that for this round, I don't know if there's another, if there's going to be more stimulus money coming in the new with the new administration. Not sure, but we're just saying that this is round one. It may be round one of one or round one of a number, but it depends on the federal funding.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Chair, may I comment on the proposed amendment? Yeah, I did explain to Councilmember Majors this afternoon, I do not support the elimination of the community policing coordinator position. I think we're going to need that position to do essentially what Blake has been doing. We're going to have a lot of CSAs to train. His his move into his new position is largely administrative and there's a lot of work which is going to go into the training, the hiring, and the supervising of those community service aides. I'd hate to lose the capacity of the community policing coordinator. So I wouldn't support that. I don't object to taking additional funds, though, as is suggested into and 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 putting them into whatever code relief fund council would like to do. So I think there's a potentially enough money to do what Councilmember Majors suggested without eliminating the community policing coordinator position.
Are you saying there's additional hundred thousand dollars that we can put out to the public to cover the COVID-19 for the rental and continuation of the utilities, Mayor?
Yeah, there's two, there's two hundred thousand that was going to go back into or not be taken drawn down from fund balance that we're saving by not doing the community service aides. So I want to apply those funds. I don't object, but I do object to to losing another position, which I think is important for for getting the community services team up and running effectively.
Mr. Majors.
Yes, so again, I think given we had a community policing coordinator who did a standout job, and we are actually looking to promote him into a new role. His job was working with the community. He's going to have six into seven, excuse me, individuals serving as community aid service aides on the city payroll that could learn, get trained up, and be able to serve in a role to assist the community. I mean, to me, that would be seven hands, excuse me, fourteen hands, seven heads, being able to do a job that we had one individual doing. That individual, those seven individuals then could report up to our director, who will have some additional responsibilities. But again, I think he is done an outstanding job, and we are actually looking to give him additional responsibility, and he would actually be managing you know, a a crew of seven, given this current budget. Again, we do have additional dollars in the budget, but I think having that director over those seven individuals along with the other responsibilities that he will be taking on in terms of working on some you know, in my mind, hopefully some additional public information outreach and messaging from the police department would be something that, again, would would be suited for a community for his, the new role that we are looking to elevate him in in this budget.
If if I may say something really quick, the, any, any, any transfer that you want to make to CDBG requires the general fund being increased. Therefore, we would also have to increase estimate cash carryover, which is the revenue line item in the general fund. So I just wanted to, I mean, I know we just cut about two, two hundred nine, two hundred nine thousand dollars from the general fund, both in expenditures and in revenue. But if you desire to to do that move, that's that's something that just wanted to make you aware of. That it will be coming from SMA cash carryover.
Okay. Okay, and then I guess additionally, if if there's concerns in terms of moving that money in a into the federal program, if we were able to mirror that and just have our own city program using those dollars, is it the same still with the estimated cost carryover? I just want to ensure that because if we're going to do that, then we could potentially house it in a specific Because if we're going to do that, then we could potentially house it in a specific department.
So with regard to augmenting federal funds, so I don't know if you want to have more flexibility with. General fund dollars in a program, but with the federal dollars, there's going to be strings attached. Compliance requirements that may be more than what you want and you might want to have flexibility, but.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I just asked the question. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that if we're going to utilize city dollars. We would want to have more flexibility than the, again, all of the rules that are in place when you. You use a federal program.
Mr. Lynch, are you on the call?
I don't see him anymore.
Blake?
He's not, I don't see him.
He was on here prior to that. You seen? How about Chief Looney?
Blake is entering now.
All right. Could you unmute yourself, Mr. Lynch? Okay, we were just, Mr. Majors was discussing removing the coordinator, community policing coordinator. How would that affect you in your, in your position?
Does that also include any elimination of the CSAs?
Yes.
There was a, there was already a, a budget amendment adopted that would reduce the number of CSAs from twelve as proposed to. Seven and that was adopted. So we would have seven CSAs. Based on how the budget is currently situated.
Okay. With the new role and responsibilities and then also now managing seven people solely. I mean, we will have, as a unit, we'll have Captain Milo Hooper as well as Corporal Hammer. Sergeant Ty Mike. So we will technically still be a unit. However, I'll be mainly responsible for the civilians. We try at least from the bureau perspective to do one per five on supervisors. You know, but absolutely, I, I think we'll be able to roll it out. I know the mayor has proposed a slow rollout as well. With regards to getting everyone up to speed.
But in your new role, how would that impact you as far as the supervision of those seven? How about the other responsibilities of the? Media communications and administrative part?
We'll make it happen. Absolutely. I feel very confident that we'll be able to accomplish the task on behalf of our residents and the bureau. It has definitely been hard doing it as a one-person shop. And calling in favors, but our community has been very supportive and a lot of volunteers helped make that happen. So we're, we're up for the task.
Well, you said it was hard doing it as one person, but if we remove the community policing coordinator. Who would assist you with the seven other CSAs? So that's why I'm asking you, is it going to be conflicting for you?
It wouldn't be conflicting because the person's again, doing a slow rollout. And involving Councilwoman Green, I know she had suggested, or I think Vice President Ella had suggested. Having someone from council assisting with that will, will definitely help. I think we're definitely going to have mature, experienced individuals. I, I personally going into today have had at least forty people reach out about the CSA roles so far. From experienced law enforcement professionals all the way down to people in college. So I think we're not going to have an issue with a diverse pool of applicants. That doesn't include other people in the bureau who've received messages. So I think we're going to have experienced people from the city for the city, diverse. And I think they will have the heart of the community, which is half the job. And the other side of it is understanding some of the policing that goes with it. And making sure the information that we discuss with people is accurate.
Okay. Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay. Mr. Amick?
So, Councilmember Majors, are you recommending, I'm sorry, I can still talk at this point, recommending this being two motions or one motion or?
Per, per the recommendation from our solicitor, there will be, I guess, two amendments. The first amendment would be to remove from the budget the. Community policing coordinator line item. That would be the first amendment.
So. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just trying to figure out where we actually procedurally are in the meeting. We came back from the break. Are we still in? Ordinances for amendment section or are we in ordinances for final passage section?
No, ordinance for amendment.
Amendment section, that was my understanding.
We haven't done anything for ordinance for passage.
For passage, that was my understanding.
Okay.
So Wes, two amendments. Now, the other amendment, did you want to keep that, that the hundred thousand, you want to increase the for COVID nineteen relief?
So it would be a, a, a city program for COVID nineteen relief per some of the conversation that occurred on here. Since we don't want to, you know, attempting to utilize the federal CDBG program would have. Additional strings at a city program would not.
So understood, but I, I have a technical question then. Are, is, are we literally adding a new line item in the budget? Because I'm not, procedurally, is that something that we can do?
That's what we're doing.
So I need a technical question answered on that.
So Mark may know the answer, whether there is a program line item that this can be put under.
And how would you regulate this?
It depends what program line item you put it under.
I would, I, I mean, if it's something that we're going to do within the general fund. You know, the administration has to manage instead of CDBG. And being transferred to CDBG, I would recommend putting it under general expenses grants to local units.
Yeah, the, the issue is whether it is a brand new item which requires the ten day notice.
Right.
Right. That's, and I think that's what council is trying to avoid. So.
A new item, I mean, there is funds already there appropriated.
For programming?
Not for that programming, no.
For any programming?
That line item, let me look at it really quick. That line item is meant for some projects and some requests that certain organizations have asked for funding.
But it's funding that we're, that we're allocating out to the residents of City Harrisburg's taxpayers' money. So would not be, wouldn't it not be considered a new type of funding?
If you guys are saying like a completely new budget unit where it's completely different and all that stuff, then yeah. But if we.
Well, we're making amendments and so when we're making amendments, this was not in the original budget. So we not have to, because we're utilizing taxpayers' money to distribute out to other taxpayers.
So I, I, I think what, if I may, we're, we're going to need a little time. If we could take a small break, I could talk to Erica about, see if we could. If we can accomplish what you want.
But I, you're saying, Mark, but is it legal? That's what, no, my question to Neil, is it legal under the budget guidelines for municipalities?
It, it can be legal if we are glomming it into something that's a multi-program. Tier in the budget of general fund money. I just, I have, they have to tell me whether that's there. For example, we do parks and rec with lots of programming money. You know, that's general fund money and we give it out, but this is not parks and rec. So I don't know whether building and housing has a pot that's not federal money. I don't know whether. Business development has a pot that's not federal money. I think I need Mr. Woolley and Erica to answer those questions.
So that's why I was asking for a recess so we could do that really quickly.
You asking for another five minute recess, Mr. Woolley?
I am requesting it so if, if, so we can get this accomplished.
Okay. We're back for another five minute recess, ladies and gentlemen. Moment?
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready to go back in session.
All right. Yes, yes, we're live, yes.
All righty, ready to go back in session, councilmembers?
Madam President?
Yes.
May I, may I say one more thing about proposed amendments? My concern in eliminating the community policing coordinator position is that we're going to lose management capacity. And it's going to detrimentally impact our ability to really create the type of community services division we want. I'm a big fan of Blake's, but I don't think this is a job that can be done by him alone. I think we are required two managers in that division. It's not somebody that can fall on the captain either or the community policing division because this is really a new civilian. Civilianized corps that we're, we're dealing with. So I can't support the elimination of that position. Again, I'm willing to work with council on other things, but I think that would severely hamper our ability to roll out. This community services division, the, the way I think everybody would like to see. We'll work with council. On the selections and the jobs and the advertising, but we don't want to lose another management position.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Woolley, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, could you give us your findings on?
Erica, you want to talk about what we talked about?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's no line item for that currently right now, so. So we will have to create a new line, 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 line for this specific project and request.
And I don't think we have authority to create a line item at this point in the budget process.
I'm going to let Neil answer that.
Yeah.
Unmuted.
The, the programs of the city are defined by the administration. Council decides to fund them or not fund them. If the council and the mayor are in agreement, it, it gets easy. If, if there's a, if it's, if it's not agreement on a new program. You get down to very murky water very fast. My concern is. Even assuming council could add a program that it wanted the mayor to administer that doesn't exist. The vote would then take us into past Christmas. There'd be a ten day minimum from now vote advertisement window. And then even if passed, you can't compel the mayor to do a, to come up with a program because there was a funding for it. I mean, those are the practical sides, not just the legal sides.
Right. I concur. Councilmember Majors, are you okay if we withdraw the, the second motion about the hundred thousand dollars for COVID nineteen funding?
Mr. Majors?
No, I, I'm, I'm here. I was actually, I'm. Yeah, no, I'm here. I was looking to see if there. Were any programs that we could use. So we do use. I mean, I think there are a number of programs that could potentially be utilized as, hold on, let me, give me a second. Yeah, so I was attempting to look for a program that we could utilize to provide some relief. If you just give me one minute as I'm finalizing something here. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind.
Well, it's also that maybe there's a partner in the first quarter to get with who's already running the program, it'd be a different issue.
Okay, well then, I, I guess, in, in trying to find a, a city program, if that's the case, then would like to see the money potentially allocated under the CDBG program and administered in the same way, so there'd be, there'd be additional funds that we could provide to city residents.
The whole $100,000, Mr. Majors, are just at 62,437?
Was looking at the, the full 100,000.
So are you referencing a specific line item, then, within that? And again, I guess the technical question I have, is this allowable? And that's what I'm not sure of.
Neil?
I'm sorry, I missed the question. What was the question?
Are we allowed to take the funding and place it in CBG funding to distribute it to the residents of Harrisburg?
My answer is I don't actually know the legal answer to that question. I know it comes with terms and conditions that are federal regulations. If you, if you link the state money, local money to federal money, you have to file the more stringent, stringent condition. That, that, that you have to do. My, my bigger concern is that it's a program that doesn't exist at the moment, and I think you're going to be in the advertising mode.
And if I, and if I may add something else to this caveat, the general fund and the special revenue funds as well that are presented before you are not part of the CDBG, so you would probably, I'm assuming, Neil, that they would also have to vote on that extra fund that they're going to get in CDBG in another time. Because the CDBG funds were already approved back in, I'm assuming, September, so there's, so two steps to that.
Not to mention, it, we'd have to get federal, we have to re, we, we'd have to get approval from HUD to do it in our action plan. So that's a step as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woolery, Mr. Majors?
Okay, yeah, again, for that piece, then, I will just, I, I withdraw the, the second piece. We'll have money in fund balance and can work with the administration to determine how to spend, potentially spend the additional funds and fund balance, who, it's something that we can all agree to, to provide additional assistance to the residents using, using, using city funds, sir.
So I will go ahead, I will make the motion from Councilmember Majors to remove the community policing coordinator position from the budget. It looks like a total salary and FICA amount of $62,437. I would just need a second to that motion.
Can I have a second to the emotion? I mean, to the motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
No.
This amendment passes four to two.
Okay, thank you. Any additional amendments from council members before we move on?
No amendment, but just, just a note that still the, the management capacity in Bureau of Police, based upon this new budget, will now have 18 individuals instead of nine, which we had previously. So there's still management within, we've been, we've essentially doubled management positions within the Bureau of Police.
Not, not within community services, unfortunately, Mr. Lynch has no experience managing employees. He needed an assistant. I think you've just jeopardized the entire transition that we're proposing for community services.
Do we have an updated figure on the budget, Neil and/or Erica?
Erica, do we have an update on the figures?
You mean in the ordinance?
On the, but, yes, no, hold on.
Yeah, do we want to reduce again revenue by the 62?
Yep, that amendment passed, so.
It passed.
No, I'm saying revenue. That was an expenditure on, that was removing an expenditure line item.
Oh, okay, then, no, we don't want to do the revenue.
There's no revenue increase at this point.
Reduction. And estimate cash carryover.
There is no other, it's just a expense reduction because the position's.
Okay, sounds, that, that's why I just wanted to make sure. Okay, yeah.
So council members, any additional amendments? So we will move on and call for a vote for ordinance or final passage. Ordinance final passage, Bill 14, 2020. Ms. Houston, read that into record with the amendments, please.
Madam President?
Yes.
I believe you have Bill 10 ahead of that on final passage.
Oh, I do, I'm sorry, that's right, I did say something to Mr. Majors. Okay, could you read Bill 10, 2020, ordinance for final passage, Ms. Houston?
Bill 10 of 2020. An ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets within the block bounded by Radnor Street, Jefferson Street, Columbia Street, and North Sixth Street, and Aggett Street between Columbia Street and Radnor Street pursuant to chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments on Bill 10, Mr. Majors?
Yes, it looks like we have, so.
Mr. Weinstock?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Weinstock, now I was just making sure I was unmuted, sorry. We have Mr. Weinstock from the Teamsters, so over the past, I guess, day or so, was able to talk with the, one of the residents that expressed some concerns with the project, and it looks like we, that the Teamster, representative from the Teamsters was able to speak with the, the property owner, and is there any update that you can provide from how those conversations went?
Thank you, and good evening. I did finally speak to Ms. Limerick, and she has been a difficult individual to get a hold of. I believe, Councilman Majors, you've attempted as well, and I believe, President Williams, you've gone to her doorstep and have had difficulty. I finally did speak to her today, and the, it seems what, what she is seeking is a private parking spot within the Teamster property. So if you know this area, the Teamsters have a, the Union Hall there, which serves over 8,500 members. We fenced, the Teamsters have fenced in the parking lot area for years, decades. And what she's asking in the plant, the long-term plan for the Teamsters is to make a very nice improvement to that area and put a new Teamster hole there, that they would fence in the area to maintain the security. She, she asked for a private key to the Teamster secured parking lot. And the Teamsters, we cannot do that for security purposes, let keys out to this individual. She has parking on, on Radnor Street, right in front of her house, so there's no way of doing it. When we had our meeting last year with the Planning Commission, the only issue she wrote, she raised at that point was her concern about having access to the rear of the property. There's a grocer's alley back there that we agreed to expand to give her that access so that her and her family would have access to the rear. So there's really no access problem in the, in the back, there's a grocer alley by design, and she still maintains her access in the front. So that's, that's the update, there's plenty of parking in the area. The Teamster's own 21 lots, right on both sides of this Aggett Street. So we would request, and we would request passage of our legislation, or legislation, thank you. Any questions?
So I just want to make sure the improvements to the grocer's alley and the expansion are a, a part of the current proposed project, and I don't know if that's either Tiffany and/or Neil can ensure that, address that, those in, I guess, the expansion of that grocer's alley.
Correct.
I think Tiffany's online here, she can answer that.
Well, I'm online, but I don't have the plans in front of me, so I will defer to Attorney Weinstock.
Thank you. The, the grocer alley is, was expanded from, to four feet to give people access to the rear of the property.
Okay, so it has, it already has been expanded, or.
That's in the, in the deed that you have in front of you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just before we move forward on a vote, I don't know if there's any additional members of council that may have questions on Bill 10?
Mr. Weinstock, are you still going to install the two poles there for additional parking? Because once you do park on that area that's owned by your Teamsters, there's individuals that will park them and will block them in if they will park at that particular space.
I'm sorry, where, are you referring to parking on Aggett Street?
No, I'm referring to the parking on Radnor Street.
This would have no effect on the Radnor Street parking?
Okay.
Absolutely none.
All right. And I have no additional questions, because I did try to meet with Ms. Limerick today at 4:58, but she did not answer the door again. No additional questions, Mr. Majors?
Okay. So, again, I'm, I'm, against, this is, this is not in committee, it's on the agenda. Because we could, yeah, move, move forward for, for final passage.
No additional questions or comments, Ms. Houston, please call the vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill 10 of 2020 passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstock.
Thank you.
Moving on to Bill 14, 2020, Ms. Houston, please read it into record along with the, as amended.
So just to be clear, am I reading this as amended first?
Yes.
You just have to say Bill 14 as amended.
So Bill 14, 2020, as amended? Yeah, and, and ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the city of Harrisburg for their year 2021.
Any additional questions or comments, council members?
Yes, if we could just, I just want on the record, the, the revised total in terms of overall revenue and overall expenses. If, Erica, you could just speak that into record to the public.
Is she still on? I think she's left.
Or Neil, do you have that number?
I do not have the very last number.
Let me see if I can get it.
Oh, here she is.
Hey, Erica, you just turned back, we're just asking for the new revised total revenue and total expense signed.
Okay, great, um, is it public safety, correct? Give me two seconds. All righty. So in the budget ordinance, the changes you're going to see again are in line 12. That went down Okay, that's line 12 in the budget ordinance. Okay, um. And public safety, I'm, I think it's just going to be the, the, the one that I printed just now, it came out a little bit weird, but I hope it's the, the right line item, line item 131. Public Safe Department of Public Safety, that's going to go down to 32, 32, um, million, 619,00681. Okay, that's. And then, um, you're going to look at line item 141. A person, which is the personnel line item for the police bureau, going down to $18,912,562. And then you're going to look at line 145, Total Bureau of Police, at 21,423,031. At twenty-one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, and thirty-two dollars. And then revenue did not change per what I mentioned before, so everything else should stay the same.
Line fifty-five, Erica, for the communications.
It was still the same.
Uh, that was last, we, we discussed that last time.
Okay, just.
All right, thank you, Erica. I'm okay to proceed, I just wanted to make sure those numbers were read into public record.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Houston, please call the vote as amended.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill fourteen, twenty twenty, as amended passes.
Now please call, what about the Bill fourteen for final passage?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Bill fourteen of twenty twenty passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Moving on to Bill twenty-one.
Bill fifteen.
Wait a minute.
The tax levy.
I'm sorry. Okay, moving on to Bill fifteen, two thousand twenty. Please read into record, Ms. Houston.
Bill fifteen of twenty twenty is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg Title V, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter Five dash five oh one, Property Tax, by establishing for the year two thousand and twenty-one a tax levy on land and improvements in providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assess them providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year two thousand and twenty-one tax levy over the tax due and attributable, attributable goal to the year two thousand and six tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Very none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill fifteen of twenty twenty passes.
Now moving on for Bill twenty-one, two thousand twenty.
Madam President, you technically have two different agendas in front of you right now.
And am I reading public comment tonight for this meeting, or is it done?
We actually have to close out this.
I have to close out this one, and then move on to the special, you're right.
So Madam President, could I make a recommendation, because of the hour and the substance, that there's a motion to merge the special emergency legislation session agenda into the current agenda to finish out the evening? It's up to you, but.
That's right, Neil. Can someone make a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
I move to merge the special emergency legislative session agenda into our current legislative agenda in the interest of time.
So moved.
Second.
Second, second.
Thank you.
Okay, am I waiting to read public comment then, or are we going to discuss the other legislation, or?
Because you've merged them, you could either do this as the combination of comment and courtesy of the floor, so the beginning of one and the end of the other. This would be the time, I would think, to do that, or the council president would have the discretion to leave it for the end.
Well, since Bill twenty-one is going to be discussed. There's going to be questions regarding that. Why don't we do the courtesy of the floor?
Okay. Give me a moment here, please.
How many do you have?
Um, there's about twenty comments, eighteen, I believe, are directly related to the budget, and the other two are referencing the emergency legislation.
Okay, thank you.
The first comment is, City Council, please read this comment in its entirety. The community is using a template to save time and still make our voices heard. We are busy, but we want to be a part of this process. Templates help us all to, all to be heard, especially when we are trying to balance out personal health, finances, and emotional wellness during a global pandemic. On November twenty-fourth, Mayor Papenfuss presented his proposed twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which includes twenty-one point six nine six million dollars for the Bureau of Police. This is a two point eight six two million dollar increase from what the Bureau of Police actually spent in twenty nineteen. The community demands to have more time to review this budget. Last week, I shared many different ways that the nearly three million dollars could be spent. This time, I'll keep it short. I rather see my tax money going to eviction assistance for my neighbors who are struggling to make ends meet this year, and to the countless people who reach out to my workplace for emergency housing assistance. I rather see community initiatives that keep us feeling holistically well and cared for. I rather see Harrisburg students thrive with additional support staff, high-tech learning schools, and programs that will help them keep engaged and supported by the community. I rather see all of these things than see three million dollars in the hands of an untrustworthy police department that fails time and time again. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty-first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that this drastic measures and bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. The, we have always done it this way rhetoric doesn't appease me or the many others who are deeply concerned about the city. If we've always done it this way, maybe we need to reconsider how we do it. We cannot be rushed to make a decision, to make decisions that will affect us all. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. Gray Seja, a Midtown Harrisburg resident. Dear community, City Council members, my name is Amanda Arbor, and I live on Allison Hill. As a city resident and taxpayer, I have been frustrated by the budget process. From the crunch timeline to the attempts to limit public comments to the disrespectful way that some council, council members have treated residents providing input. It has felt like an uphill battle at every turn to access information and to ensure that all of our voices are heard and respected. I understand that there are certain ways that things have always been done in this city, but if our business, as usual, is actively leaving the people most impacted out of the process, then something needs to change. We cannot keep replicating the same dysfunctional and oppressive practices that have been part of Harrisburg's culture for decades. I believe that, that most of you on council have good intentions and sincerely want to do what's best for the residents of this city, but if your actions or inactions are causing harm, then your intentions are not good enough. Delaying a vote for two business days is not good enough, when we are demanding two more weeks to work on this. Reducing the number of civilian positions in the police budget is not good enough, when we are demanding that you flat fund them at their twenty nineteen actual level. Eighteen million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, and reallocate the extra two point eight six two million dollars to community services, particularly housing. Saying that you want more data from the police is not good enough, if you cannot hold them accountable for providing that data before allocating any more funds. You have a responsibility to the people who elected you to ensure that our voices are heard and our input incorporated in a tangible, intangible ways into this budget. Mayor Papenfuss has not done that, so now it is up to you. We need leadership that is courageous and willing to fight for the people you are sworn to serve, even if it is uncomfortable or unpopular. Your constituents are watching. Vote no on this budget tonight, and let's work together over the next two weeks to construct, construct something that truly reflects the needs of the people of Harrisburg. Thank you. Dear City Council, next comment, please read this, this comment in its entirety. The first part is similar to a previous comment, so I will skip over that, but I will read the part, the body in between. It says, the community demands to have more time to review this budget. Budget funding during these times can be used for much more sustainable and community-oriented actions. Housing is a major issue in Harrisburg, and funding can be used to expand rental assistance, vacating eviction judgments against Harrisburg residents, six months of rental relief for affected tenants, and incentivizing residents of Harrisburg, not developers, to acquire city properties. Investing in community incentives such as after-school programs and safe supportive places for youth. Many of these community incentives will directly help reduce the amount of policing that is needed in the community. These funds can go towards a new community services division to help support community needs without direct, often violent, police involvement in creating civilian positions which help create more jobs. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty-first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. The city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. And that is sincerely Samantha Mayer. Looks like the seventeen hundred block of North Second Street. The next comment, dear City Council, please read this comment in its entirety. This community is using a template to save time and still makes our voices heard, excuse me, heard. Again, the top part is similar to previous messages that I read, so I'll read the body in between. Our demands are, delay the vote on the budget until December twenty-ninth to allow enough time for our input and yours to be incorporated into amendments and vote no if it's brought to you to vote tomorrow. Amend the budget to flat fund the Bureau of Police at their twenty nineteen actual level of eighteen million, eight hundred and thirty-four. And reallocate the extra two point eight six two million dollars to community services and particular housing. Do not allocate any additional funds to the Bureau of Police without data proving that they are not practicing race, racist policing. As social unrest conned over the summer, we saw people come together across the nation and even the world to protest police brutality and systemic racism. In Harrisburg, we have political leaders such as Governor Wolf, Mayor Papenfuss, and Police Commissioner Carter join these protests in support of the movement. It is time now to take this support further and reflect it in the city's budget. The community is watching. We know that the holidays are coming, but there is still a job to be done. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty-first to pass this budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increases in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for the Harrisburg residents. Again, the city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. We demand that the community initiatives listed above be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. And thank you, and stay safe. Sincerely, Kylie Bute, Bute of Midtown Harrisburg. Dear City Council, I would all ask that you delay your vote on the twenty twenty-one city budget until December twenty-ninth to allow enough time for community review and input. I first want to see more data to justify the dramatic increase in the Bureau of Police's budget, especially considering the current police vacancies. I'd also like to see the police department publish online in an easily accessible manner racial and other demographic data on stops, arrests, and charges, as well as aggregate data on use of force reports and citizens' complaints. However, if the vote does proceed tonight anyway, I ask that you vote no and keep the Bureau of Police, Police's budget at last year's budget levels. The mayor's proposed increase would mean that one dollar out of every five dollars of our taxpayer dollars would go to the police budget. This is not acceptable. Rather than more policing, Harrisburg citizens need more protecting during these uncertain times. Use the money instead to protect housing rights and help citizens facing eviction. Use the money to protect our health during this pandemic and by providing an overall better public health infrastructure. Use the money to protect our kids' futures by giving them after-school programs and better educational options. Use the money to protect our city's crumbling infrastructure, repairing potholes, and our old sewer system. Thank you for your consideration, Meg Ramey of the Midtown area. Next comment. Dear City Council, please delay the budget vote until December twenty-ninth to allow the community enough time to respond and provide input. Most people have jobs and other responsibilities and do not have time to fully engage in this process with such a short turnaround. You work for the people, so you should want to hear what the people have to say. If this is brought to a vote tonight, please vote no. Please reallocate the extra two point eight million dollars from the police to community services such as housing. The people of Harrisburg have identified several areas they need funding for more than police, including housing, after-school centers for students, accessibility and mobility, and public health services like COVID testing. Do not increase the police budget without a data proof, without data proving that more dollars equals more safety. Finally, please also read every single comment, even if they are similar. Similar comments mean two things. People want to be a part of this process but aren't good at writing or do not have time to write something unique, and so they use templates or a bullet list to formulate their comment. And the community is clear and unified on what we need, and we are trying to communicate those needs to you. Everyone's voice matters. Please listen. Thank you. And that is Deb Naff, Naffa Zeiger. Next comment. To Madam President and all City Council members, all of you, at one time or another, commented that Harrisburg residents do not actively participate in the business of city government. I will agree that the statement has some merit. Not all residents do. Twenty twenty has become, however, the year of our discontent. Citizens are organizing, are scrutinizing the actions of the mayor, the administration, public safety, and city council. Questions are being asked and comments are being made. Somehow, all of this is perceived as a threat. It is not. It is democracy. It is for the people and by the people. It is the voice wanting a progressive city for all, for all the people, a city that has room for all the, for all at the table. Listen and heed. Our voices are not going away, and in fact, will be joined by many more. City Council, it is now time for self-reflection. Why do you want this elected position? Prestige? Resume building? If you truly want to be a part of a move, of moving Harrisburg forward and building a community that serves us, then pay attention, because we, the people, will make the decisions for you. Respectfully, Jane Buwak of Allison Hill. Uh, this next comment is from the Greater Tenants. A Greater Harrisburg Tenants United, excuse me. Dear City Council and Mayor Papenfuss, actually, this one I'll save, because this one is directly related to, my apologies, to Bill twenty-one of twenty twenty, so I'll move on from that one. And then. Uh, that one also does, okay. So the next comment. Says, dear City Council members, have we got data on how the police respond to complaints in different parts of the community? Have we got data on whether crime rates have been affected by the people, the number of people in the city? Have we got data on how funds have been used by Harrisburg Police Department to prevent crime? No one disputes that our residents want a safer city. No one disputes that we're tired of witnessing, hearing, or hearing about shootings around the city. We are disputing the idea that police involvement is going to reduce crime in a city riddled by poverty, unstable housing, a crumbling infrastructure, and a school district that has been stripped of resources and left to crumble. We're saying that a better way to actually improve safety is to improve health, access to resources, equitable education, and affordable housing. Keep adding police, that they'll always have job security if we're assuming they are going to fix these problems, but we've seen no data showing the efficacy of police in Harrisburg's actually solving the root of criminal activity. And we're willing to give the police a nearly three million dollar bump in their budget when they did not even use the entire budget allotted to them last year. Most entities lose budget funding that they don't use. Please do not pass this budget increase and start looking for ways to improve the welfare of Harrisburg residents. Thank you, Liam Hicklin of Midtown. Moment. Moment. This comment. Next comment. Good evening, City Council. So tonight is the night you've designated to vote on the twenty twenty-one budget, despite public feedback that urges you to take more time. Despite the concern I heard voiced by some council members, and despite the fact that Council Member Shemane Daniels cannot be present tonight. Much has been said about this is the way we always do it, but I did some checking. Last year, council voted on the budget on December twenty seventh, and some years, the hearings have been held over two weeks with time in between for thought. Further information and amendments. So no, you don't have to vote tonight or even next week. Let me say that again. You do not need to vote tonight. I would also remind you that just because you've always done the budget this way doesn't mean you should. It appears that budget hearings by departments ought to be held in November. I actually think that's in your process somewhere, but like so many things that are supposed to happen in Harrisburg, like annual, now quarterly reporting by police to City Council, it gets ignored for whatever expedient. Some seems like you're gonna do that again. I keep hearing that those of us who've been writing and interacting with the budget process don't represent all of Harrisburg. Mr. Allen has said several times he sees a diversity of opinion. Where are those people? Why aren't they coming to council? Could it be there are a lot more of us than you think? Maybe we really do represent most of the people. Could it be those people find it just as hard to access the processes we have? Texting a council member is not the same thing as having your concerns read and to the record. This massive expansion of the police budget is simply poor governing. We do not have the data to back it up. You have not listened to what the community is saying. This expansion will not end the current gun violence. It does nothing to change that. It does not and cannot address the underlying causes. It is at best a very expensive bandage on a gushing wound. We are still in a pandemic. We need safe, decent, and affordable housing. We need COVID testing that is available to everyone, especially in black and brown communities. We need infrastructure, including parks that is in good repair for everyone. We need small black and brown-owned businesses on the hill and uptown, especially restaurants afforded the same support as Second Street. We need disaster planning. We, the people of Harrisburg, deserve better than this. Give the police budget the same dollars you did last year until they can show all of us the data. No data, no dollars. Pamela Parsons, South Allison Hill. Next comment. Good evening, folks. First and foremost, I want to thank Lady Chardan of House Houston for reading our comments. While my black voice is silenced, I'm glad they uplift yours. You speak with oomph as well as the intent and passion that we wrote these comments with. I appreciate you and hope you continue to read our comments. May your festival of light be litty. Secondly, I am tired of writing to City Council every week. Multiple times a week during a holiday, lots of people have filled out a survey about this budget. We want data about the police activities. Do we not pay their salaries? Why the holdup? Why are the right-to-knows unanswered? Last week, I heard folks from Uptown and the Hill say how the Harrisburg Police Bureau of Police doesn't answer calls. Yet less than three weeks ago, I saw four squad cars pull up to another noise complaint in Midtown. I would also like to add that most of the officers weren't wearing masks, and yet again, they, as a they, as a veteran and someone who has experienced police brutality at the hands of the Harrisburg Police over a noise complaint, I couldn't turn away. Instead, I used the Legal Observer training that I got from the National Lawyers Guild. I took pictures and video as the police interrogated another black man for just being black. How can Eric and Carter claim they don't have enough resources yet they continue to harass the black and brown residents of Midtown, Shypoke, and Downtown? If anything, that three million dollars that y'all magically came up with should go to the black and brown residences that have had to put up with a lackluster police force. I don't believe anyone would reward a child for misbehaving, yet you want one out of every five city dollars to go to those same folks that can't protect black and brown lives. That doesn't make any sense. Thirdly, President Wanda joked about running again. As a veteran, I didn't find this funny. I fought hard and have lost countless brothers and sisters in arms to defend our democracy. While I don't expect you to understand the impact these words had on me, I hope you understand the negative impact you had on the community. We are looking to elected officials more than ever. We need hope and guidance from our elected officials. President Wanda even dismissed a lot of our comments claiming we don't represent the community. Yet we can't make comments live. We have to email our comments before four P M., and each one has to be unique. This is a way to silence more black and brown people, and it doesn't sit right with me. Watching President Wanda misuse her authority to pick on Dr. Campbell, who has been leading the charge against police brutality, was disheartening to say the least. How can I trust that the president won't abuse her authority like she did with previous nights to harass citizens? Am I next? Is anyone who makes public comments? I noticed how President Wanda didn't bully any white person who made a comment. Finally, the city sanitation budget was cut significantly, but we need to clean the city more than ever. We need more after-school programs to stop the preschool to prison pipeline. We need our streets repaired. Riley Street has a dip-dip. Uptown has more potholes than a sponge. We need COVID-nineteen testing. Hamilton Health Center has made it more accessible, but they only have seventy-five tests. They're only testing two days a week. That's not enough for a city of fifty-seven thousand people, and this city council knows it. Folks without cars are screwed over. They don't have the accessibility to get tested at Rite Aid or C V S on the White Shore. Housing is another crisis we're having in the city. Folks need rent relief and mortgage relief. How tone deaf do you have to be to ignore the pleas of your citizens? Like my ancestors before me were under siege, and just like them, I'm holding out hope. I'm hoping that this council will provide the relief your black and brown residents need. Like the miracle of the oil lasting eight days, I'm hoping for another miracle such as food, housing, and medical care for our people. I know that my opinion probably means deadly squat to this council and that even the white citizens don't want more money to go to the police. Are you gonna ignore your target audience? Warm regards, Rachel Peacock. Next comment. Harrisburg City Council, please delay this vote until the community can give more input for the tax dollars you are putting to use for us. I am concerned that the police budget is being increased significantly without input from city residents. I would like to see data showing that the police are instituting ways to change the institutional racism that exists in the framework of the Police Department and their policies. We want a safe community that treats everyone equally. Please don't spend more money on riot gear, but spend more money on social services that help to deal with social issues that sometimes lead to jail. Money towards homeless, substance abuse, rehab, mental health, job training, changing laws that continue to harm ex-offenders, records that follow them around and prevent them from getting jobs. I suggest delaying the vote or voting no until public can comment more or just leave the police budget what it was last year. Sincerely, Joshua Moore. Next comment. Council, please do not pass the budget as is. There are so many pressing needs in Harrisburg right now. Housing, access to food, education, access to healthcare, and security are all issues that Harrisburg residents struggled with before COVID. The pandemic has only exasperated these problems and residences lived experience. More police funding does not provide houses, food, education, medicine, or security. I'll say it again. More cops and more money for cops does not make communities safer. Ensuring that the residents of Harrisburg or Howes have access to food, have access to quality education as children and adults, have access to healthcare, COVID-related, and regular physical and mental healthcare will create a safer Harrisburg. Please delay the vote on the budget till the twenty ninth so that we can reallocate funds in order to ensure community safety. If you cannot do that, please do not raise the police budget by a record amount. Amend the budget and give the police their twenty nineteen budget, not a nickel more. The city should use the difference to fund more housing relief and the other relief in line with issue areas I highlighted before. Fund the city and city residents. Do not fund the police who do not live in the city. Eric and the Bureau of Police Leadership have conceded that most Harrisburg cops are looking to leave as soon as they can. Why fund a department like that when our resources are stretched? Prioritize the actual residents who love this city. Michelle Bajpa. And that is Midtown Harrisburg. Next comment. City Council, many of us, in spite of your unwillingness to more easily foster community involvement, have made known our demands regarding this budget. It would be egregious of you to vote yes on a poorly crafted, rushed budget that fails to take the needs of our city's residents in full account. Policing is not the only form of public safety. Again, policing is not the only form of public safety. Housing is public safety. Wily accessible COVID testing is public safety. Mental health resources that are independent of the Police Department are public safety. Youth programs are public safety. And these are just a few examples that I am citing from the budget survey I helped disseminate to fellow residents. None of these things include allocating millions in additional funds, one in five total city dollars to the Harrisburg Police. We want to see our city come out of this pandemic, having helped our most vulnerable survive it. The Police Department cannot do that. You can help do that by reallocating these funds to where they are most needed. Amend this budget. Know that you've done well for the city's residents who elected you to those seats you sit in. Stop neglecting us. Stop giving the police more money to continue being ineffectual and opaque. Do the right thing. Angela Kirkland, fifteen hundred block of Second Street. Dear, this comment is from Councilperson Shemane Daniels. Dear Councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to hear my comments as a constituent. I am unable to participate as a council member due to a prior commitment. This will be the first budget legislative session I have ever missed since being on council. The municipal budget is the document that sets the moral priorities of this city. It reflects our values as employers and as service providers and speaks for both the legislative and executive branches. In the midst of a pandemic, it reflects whether we do, in fact, value the work of our essential workers and the people we serve. Once again, the lack of pay parity continues to dog this city. Black and brown workers, particularly women, continue to be underpaid compared to their white male peers. I have asked my fellow council members to consider amendments that will address some of these disparities. I doubt I have identified all of the disparities. However, a salary scale that relies on the expertise, skills required by the job would go a long way in removing the lack of pay equity in the city. Additionally, we have historically failed to meet our Title II, Title VI, and Title VIII obligations to the residents of our city. These failures were applicable, where applicable, have been by both the executive and legislative branches. The pandemic has exasperated these failures. I have asked council to consider adding funds to council's communications budget to ensure that our meetings and materials are more accessible to our residents with visual and hearing impairments and who have limited English proficiency. Finally, regarding the C S A, I would urge council members to consider not allocating these funds and make a decision once there are actual protocols developed. As presented, the C S A role could cause serious damage to victims, defendants, and witnesses in criminal investigations. Ethical lines and boundaries must be clear. The C S A must be clear on who they are duty-bound to and be trained enough to understand the legal consequences of communicating with victims, defendants, and witnesses or requesting access to information and/or evidence. Without a clear structure and protocols, these positions can be very dangerous to the very same people they are intended to help. Thank you for taking my comments, and I apologize to the residents of Harrisburg for not being able to be present to be present for today's votes. Time regards, Shemane Daniels. Next comment. Dear City Council, please schedule more time for review and amendment of this budget with input from the public. The proposals being considered will have significant impacts on our communities, and we need more time to be involved. While I recognize that the final review stage of the budget is the same as in prior years, the total time available for citizen review was reduced. The public was denied the opportunity to hear from department heads about their budgetary priorities in November, as required by Pennsylvania law fifty-three P dot S four dash four one four one seven. Please delay your vote and schedule more opportunities for citizen engagement and amendment. Further, although I appreciate that council is considering scaling back the police bureau's requested budgetary increase by amendment, this proposal does not go far enough. If Harrisburg is in the position of allocating additional an additional three million dollars, I would like to see that funding support initiatives that increase access to home ownership, assist low-income homeowners with necessary repairs, and do more to help the unhoused members of our community. I would like to see that funding go to development of walk-in COVID testing clinics in parts of the city that currently have no access. I would like to see more support going to help our food insecure neighbors. I reject the premise that the police provide the only means of public safety and resent that the council president consistently derides those of us with this position as not caring about public safety. Not everyone is safer around police, and there are other means of addressing community needs. I am concerned that the Police Department's budget is inflated as it is widely acknowledged by council and the mayor that they have been unable to fill positions. I gather from the meetings I have recently attended that these funds seem to be able to be reallocated without much public accountability. I would prefer to see this funding allocated to directly help our neighbors who are in crisis now, rather than holding space for new policing staff or funding ad hoc projects without community accountability. I also would like to see amendments of the eviction bill that has been proposed. I want to first thank you for trying to address this critical need within the city. However, there are some specific missing pieces that I hope you can address. First, tenants can still be evicted for reasons other than non-payment of rent due to COVID-related income reduction. Regardless of the reason, allowing people to be evicted during winter in the middle of a pandemic is inhumane. Full stop. Please amend the resolution to prevent eviction for any reason during this time. Second, nothing in the bill precludes eviction from any hotel or motel. A number of large buildings in the city offer very low-cost housing as efficiency apartments and are registered as hotels, although people live in them. Because these dwellings exist outside the purview of P A landlord-tenant law, tenants can be evicted with very little warning. Eviction from these buildings should also be prohibited during this crisis. Thank you for your time and attention. Rachel Gold, Riverside Neighbor. Next comment. Dear City Council, please read this comment in its entirety. The community is using a template to save time and still make our voices heard. We are busy, but we want to be a part of this process. Thank you for the work you are doing to hear the people of Harrisburg and to make our city a better, more equitable place for all. Thanks to those who are working tirelessly to keep community members in the loop to provide feedback to these matters. On November twenty-fourth, Mayor Papenfuss presented his proposed twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Harrisburg, which included the largest increase in Harrisburg's history for the Bureau of Police. The community demands to have more time to review this budget and to get more information. We need to see data that shows this increase in spending is going to be an effective use of money that will keep our community safer. We want to see data that the Bureau of Police are working against racist policing, not engaging in it. No data, no dollars. Additionally, there are many community organizations that are working on issues such as homelessness, prevention, and youth development that have no data to show that what they are doing is working. These organizations must be uplifted at a time when so many people are failing through, falling through the cracks. We know that the holidays are coming. We still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. You have until December thirty-first to pass this budget. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increases in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. Please thoroughly examine where you are spending money to make our community safer. Sincerely, Michaela Moritz of the two hundred block of Hamilton. Sincerely, Michaela Moritz of the 200 block of Hamilton Street. Next comment. Dear City Council, here's what the community is asking for. We have shared the data with you from our community survey that indicates that residents are very concerned about housing. You all have it in your inboxes. Throwing more money at the police bureau that has had years to figure out how to properly allocate funds, but has failed miserably is disrespectful to the community. And to do so without any data to back up what they are proposing is irresponsible. Please delay the budget vote until December 29th. Take time to listen to residents and put together a budget plan that puts the needs of the community first. Amend the 2021 budget to find, to fund the police at the 2019 actual level and reallocate nearly $3 million in funds to community services like housing, transportation, sanitation, coronavirus testing, and youth programming. If you don't pass the budget tonight, you harm nothing. You have time. The reason why the community considers this process to be so rushed is because we are facing the biggest increase to the Bureau of Police in history. I repeat, in history. This is, this is significant. Our concerns are valid. Further, a note on the city's democracy. Wanda's woeful comment at the Thursday legislative session proves that she either doesn't know how democracy works or she is too power drunk to understand that voters absolutely have the right to hold their account, hold her accountable for not listening and trying to overfund the police against resident wishes. She lied when she suggested that people want no public safety. No one has ever said that. And Wanda can't claim that she is acting in the interest of 50K Harrisburg residents when she continues to curtail public comments about this budget. Responding to the budget on the website nearly, on the website nearly impossible. These are all the things that are within her control. I went on to the website several times to submit comments on the budget. There is no such option. And while I am glad woefully Wanda apologized, as she should have done without prompting, she should also be aware that what she does as the president of the council is very different than when any citizen, any private citizen does in their own home on their own time. Trying to equate a private citizen's action with your continued bad behavior is disingenuous. Please delay this vote and listen to the growing number of Harrisburg residents responding to the community's budget survey. If you don't want to hear what we are saying, that's fine. Just say that, but there are more than just a handful of people speaking out. I hope you all have a great meeting. Dr. Kamika Campbell, Harrisburg resident. Next comment. Dear City Council, I recently read an op-ed and pen live outlining reasons members of the Harrisburg community oppose 2.862 million dollars increase to the police budget. I also oppose this budget increase. As a public health professional, I appreciate the call to action. No data, no dollars. In public health, we use data to drive action. We also consider the root causes of poor health, but the health, both the health of individuals and communities. Even before COVID wreaked havoc on our lives, too many of our neighbors were living in poverty, attending under-resourced schools and experiencing health disparities. See footnote for citations. Unsurprisingly, a global pandemic has only added to these challenges. To this end, I have to question why the mayor and city council would choose to invest more money into the police force, which has yet to provide more transparency that the community has been calling for, instead of putting that money directly into community-based initiatives. I offer a few thoughts in hopes you will reconsider how Harrisburg prioritizes its limited funds. Housing, first comment. Housing, according to the Journal Health Affairs, housing is one of the best researched social determinations that, or detriment, excuse me, of health. And selected housing intervention for low-income people have been found to improve health outcomes and increase healthcare costs. And then she has an insert for a link, excuse me, they have an insert for a link. And the next bullet point is, members of the community have proposed some great options to better support housing, including preventing evictions, expanding rental assistance, and providing support services for Section Eight recipients. Gun violence is the next bullet point. Instead of investing more money into an infrastructure that has failed to show it can produce adequate data support to, data to support its work, why not fund local public health experts to partner with community groups in order to collect quality data about gun violence and use that data to invest in evidence-based solutions housed, excuse me, housed in the community, not under the police department? And they have a resource with another link. I know I am not the only community member with ideas for how Harrisburg City Funds can better serve the community than through the police department. We are aware that you are eager to relax into the holiday season, but we, the community you serve, still demand transparency and fairness for our budget. No data, no dollars. There is nothing to prove that these drastic measures and bloated increase, bloated increase in spending for the Bureau of Police will improve public safety for Harrisburg residents. In fact, national public health experts advocate for investment in upstream solutions over policing, including increased investment in promoting racial and economic equity to address social detriments of health and implement community-based alternatives to addressing harms and preventing trauma. Other strategic, other strategies and a full public policy statement can be found here. And there's a link. The city's history of rushing budgets through without input from the community must end. I join my neighbors to demand that the community initiatives we propose be funded to help our youth and save our community during this difficult time. Sincerely, Alexandria Sheriffs, MPH, and 900 Block of Front Street. And that is the last comment for this evening.
Sharnan, I, before you finish, you mentioned you moved two comments that had to do with the special legislation we're talking about. Do you want to read those now?
Yes, I can, yes. One moment. Okay, so the first comment is from the Greater Harrisburg Tenants United. And they said, Dear City Council and Mayor Papenfuss, GHTU has reviewed the contents of proposed Bill 21, 2020. We want to applaud the city for rallying to respond legislatively to the unprecedented threats posed by the winter 2020 COVID-19 case surge. We vigorously suggest that a public health emergency be declared in the city of Harrisburg, along with an associated prohibition on eviction, ejection, or displacement to be renewed every 30 days until such a time when, A, a COVID-19 vaccine becomes available to every resident of the city, B, the city unemployment rate has returned to a pre-pandemic level of 4% or less, and C, new cases of COVID-19 reported within the city decreased substantially for four consecutive weeks. We trust that it is the intent of this bill to protect the health and safety of all people at risk of eviction in Harrisburg City as we await further federal action and aid. This is why we are alarmed by a number of unaddressed possibilities for eviction and available loopholes to the proposed prohibition. A, Part B, three dash three fifty-five, point two zero E five specifies that nothing in the bill precludes evicted, eviction based on violating any other contractual obligation other than, one, the timely payment of rent fees, late charges, utilities, or other costs associated with the tenant, tenancy, lease, or contract non-payment. Or two, overstaying of term of occupancy, lease expiration. While we applaud the council for including cases of non-payment and lease expiration, under the purview of the eviction prohibition, in our experience, lease termination for any reason is a reserved right in many leases and could be easily deployed in a bid to bypass the spirit of this bill. This is why we vigorously recommend that rather than opening a gap, a gaping loophole for potentially petty contractual violations to be deployed in a bid to evict a tenant, Part B, Section three dash three fifty-five dot two, excuse me, yeah, that, or point two zero E five be amended and any reasons, and any reasons for lease termination, which would make a tenant ineligible for protection from eviction, simply be listed explicitly along with those detailed in Part B, Section three dash three fifty-five, point two zero, one through four. Part B, Part B, Section three dash three fifty-five point two zero F specifies that nothing in the bill precludes eviction from any property licensed and registered hotel or motel. As we are sure the council and mayor are aware, a number of large buildings offering efficiency apartments and rooms for rent are registered as hotels within the city lines. These establishments charge weekly rooming fees and falling outside the purview of PA landlord tenant law are able to evict tenants in a matter of days following non-payment. Greater Harrisburg Tenants United and its partner organizations deal with these sorts of hotel residents and work to prevent their eviction on a regular basis. These establishments' practices of ejection from dwelling units pose a major threat to the health and safety of some of the poorest city residents and must not be permitted during this pandemic. This is why we demand that Part B, Section three dash fifty-five point two zero F be dropped or amendments made to protect residents of certain hotel licensed efficiency apartments from ejection. If the city wishes to indicate their commitment to the health and safety of the most impoverished, vulnerable, and at-risk residents, this is a must. Hang on one second. We appreciate your willingness to act decisively and firmly to protect the dignity, safety, and the very lives of city residents and our fellow neighbors. Excuse me, sincerely, Greater Harrisburg Tenants United. And then there was one more comment. Next comment. Dear City Council and Mayor Papenfuss, I would like to say how pleased I am that the city council and the mayor have taken steps to address the current housing crisis. However, proposed Bill 20 dash 2020 does not offer enough protection to Harrisburg tenants. It does not, it does nothing to protect some of the most vulnerable renters in the city. Tenants with an oral lease, which defaults to a 30-day or month-to-month lease, which can be terminated at any time by the landlord, tenants living in boarding houses, and tenants living in efficiency apartments that are registered as hotels, not permit dwellings. And as such, place tenants in extremely precarious living, excuse me, living situations. Landlords have and will continue to exploit these loopholes. The proposed bill strongly resembles the CBC eviction moratorium, which has been in place since September. Since the moratorium was put in place, hundreds of eviction cases were heard. Hundreds of individuals were forced from their homes during the height of the pandemic. I am not blaming the city council for replicating that previous moratorium guidelines. I am blaming landlords for exploiting every opportunity to make money off of our basic need for housing. The current housing crisis is not isolated. It is a rupture of a system that has always put tenants in crisis. If the goal of this bill is to protect tenants from unnecessary eviction during the coldest part of the year, then it must be amended to disallow evictions not only for non-payment of rent, but also for termination or non-renewal of the lease and any violation of the lease agreement that does not pose a direct safety risk and to include renters in boarding houses and efficiency apartments. This is not a political decision. It is a moral one. We must value human life over private property. Thank you for your time. Otis Pierce, Fifth Street resident. And I believe that those are the only two comments.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. And that's all, that's the complete comments from everyone tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Council members, we now will move to Bill 21, 2020. Ms. Houston, please be get into record.
Bill 21 of 2020 is an emergency ordinance amending Chapter three dash three fifty-five of Title III, the Public Safety Code, by adding Part Two supplemental emergency powers to provide temporary direct supplemental local authority to implement remedial measures to address public health emergencies during extended state of emergency, including moratoriums on the eviction, ejection, or removal of families, household, or individuals from a residential dwelling unit or rooming house. Providing exceptions thereto, providing increased fines and penalties for violators, authorizing the adoption of emergency regulations, and making technical conforming amendments.
Now, the members, do I need to suspend the rules for discussion on Bill 21?
Yes, please.
Okay. May you make that motion, please?
Yes, I move to suspend the rules for further discussion on Bill 21 of 2020.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I got it.
Okay, thank you. We are now in the discussion period of suspension of the meeting. Ms. Bowers, you have questions?
I do, I have a comment and then some questions.
Okay.
So first, I just wanted to thank all of the residents that have offered public comments, urging council to take action to halt all evictions to ensure the safety of our residents. Know that we've heard you and we believe that Bill 21 of 2020 and Resolution 100 of 2020 offer our support to protect our residents and offer a solution to this dire need. I was hoping that Mr. Grover could please provide an overview of the bill. And I would like to thank the Law Bureau for their speedy turnaround with both the drafting of the bill and the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. The, if this bill arises out of a series of discussions over a very long period of time, sort of like watching a slow train wreck heading and heading towards the city and watching the federal and state governments starting to just walk away from the problem, which at least they addressed early in the spring and through the summer, and with a moratorium now being lifted coming December 31st. I will note upfront, because I think it's the fair thing to do, we could not secure the Law Bureau hard numbers from the county as yet. It doesn't mean they won't come. So everything we have on evictions is anecdotal at the moment. We could look on the county websites for the various district justices and see there's plenty of pending landlord tenant claims and cases. We just can't really tell the basis for the claim and where they are in the process, but there are plenty. We just don't have a solid number. We've heard anything from a few hundred to 500 that would become effective come January. We have reached out to a number of people, including Chief Enterline, who is head of public safety for COVID coordination, Christian Churches United, other groups who deal with homelessness. Included in the package today, we provided you with three binders of material, one on data, one on documents, and one on a federal study on the pandemic. Demonstrate that there is woefully few beds in the city of Harrisburg for the homeless and that there are nowhere near 500 to start with, you know, taking on 500 households that would lose their homes come January. So it does present, I believe, from the chief's point of view and the city's point of view, a true public health emergency. I believe what we've presented to you is a truly unique piece of legislation. It started from the motivation that the governor said that he could not move forward any further without a legislative solution by the state. The state went home without providing one. So we deemed that to leave it to local governments to come up with that legislative solution. We have tried very hard to craft this into what you already have authority to do and what the city exercises authority to do all the time. We tied it to our housing legislation, our rooming house permits, and other permits that are in the law. Basically, making violations through eviction of the eviction moratorium a violation of those provisions. The, we have authorized all enforcement officers of the city, regardless of what their normal assignment is, to enforce this ordinance. It has fines that are the maximum allowed under the optional third-class city code, which is up to $10,000 for housing fines and 90 days in jail. The difference between what we have and what the fed, federal government has in their restrictions, in my view, is substantial because we have essentially criminalized the violation. We have been in communication with the Common Police Court, who said once a ordinance was received, they would follow the law and amend the, the current order on moratorium to note this law and that the moratorium is in Harrisburg of council, so chooses to pass this. In support of the legislation, we have provided you with three sets of unique findings, one public health regulatory findings, which are all the things that have happened under COVID, to tell people how bad it is and give actual copies of what those are. And the growing number of illnesses and deaths arising in Harrisburg and Dolphin County and throughout the state. We have provided you with We have provided you with a set of findings on, um, the regulatory background that this council has to work from in terms of the, of the law, both federal, state, and local, in order to exercise its authority under the optional third-class city code and under the Harrisburg code. And there is authority to be used there. Um, it takes consideration of the fact that there are, um, people who have not been paid as a landlord, who are also, uh, owners of property in our city that have, some of them gone nine and ten months without payment, uh, so that, um, it, it does not take away the right to be paid. It simply extends the time for which that payment would come. Uh, it, uh, it, we have included information about the lack of shelters for women and children, uh, for men. Some of the shelters literally will not allow people in, allow them in traditionally because they're already considered full, uh, even before evictions start coming up. Uh, and we've gone through and, and given as much as that detail as we could muster. We have more, uh, requests out for such detail and will provide those to council as they come through so that you can see the level, uh, of what's there. Um, what this does is create supplemental emergency powers in a new provision, uh, of the Public Safety Code that, uh, allows the mayor to issue a declaration of supplemental emergency for thirty days at a time based on conditions on the ground. Um, so the moratorium can be put in place for up to thirty days and extended throughout two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, uh, and then the ordinance itself expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. That was done purposely because it's an extraordinary exercise of power by government, uh, to step in and do a moratorium on an agreement between two private parties. Uh, and, uh, we felt we needed to acknowledge that, that it was an extraordinary step for extraordinary reasons. Um, the enforcement powers, however, continue after the expiration if we learn that people have basically abused and ignored the law, uh, so that codes and fire and others continue to pursue violators. Um, some of the comments that were made are accurate. We took a lot of the exceptions to evictions from other proclamations issued by both the C D B C, CDC, governor, and the courts. Um, I will tell you, at least from my anecdotal experience, one of the drivers of that was the original broadest ones did not allow people to escape from situations of domestic abuse. That is, they couldn't remove someone and it was trying to find a thread the needle on how do you keep people safe um, for other issues in evictions. And there's not an easy answer to that. We've tried the best we can to mold that. Um, I will note there talked about the landlord and hotel exception that is there. We specifically refer to the fact that this landlord tenants were registered and must pay taxes to Dauphin County as the hotel tax. It is my understanding, many who they refer to as sort of the landlords who claim to be hotels and motels do not provide any money, yet alone data, as required to Dauphin County for hotel tax. So, you know, that we would consider them someone that we could pursue and prosecute because they wouldn't meet the exception of the hotel or motel. We're talking about genuine folks that register their rooms, register their residence, pay their taxes on a routine business basis. And as far as I know, almost none are none of the, of the boarding houses. Um, this goes to rooming houses as well. Uh, it considers, uh, you lose your rooming house permit for ninety or a hundred and twenty days if you evict someone from your rooming house. Um, you, uh, it, it goes to, um, uh, residential registration requirements. We require landlords to re- to register their, their units here. And it, it becomes a violation of that provision if you have evicted someone and you lose your certificate that you get to have rental registration. Um, uh, the, the idea is to basically make non-compliance something very unattractive uh, for why this content continues in place. And I don't think any of us can predict whether it's needed for thirty days or sixty days or ninety days or a hundred and twenty days because we can't really predict how fast the vaccines will take place and how they'll be affected. Um, we don't expect that it will be, uh, uh, something that goes the whole year, but we just obviously can't know the answer to that question. That's why it goes through the rest of the year. Um, uh, it allows the city, uh, departments to make regu- uh, regulations to enforce it. Uh, basically, as they get onto the ground, that's what they need to do, which can happen very quickly, uh, so that those regulations can be published and people could be aware, um, the steps that we will be taking if, uh, there's non-compliance. We tap into the state emergency, uh, management law that gives the mayor direct authority to declare emergencies and use that as one of the basis for our, uh, our authority. We give people the due process of the right to file in court, uh, if they feel they're aggrieved as a property owner, a manager, uh, or, uh, uh, an operator of a rental unit that has been, uh, stopped from the moratorium or, or penalized for moratorium. Um, so from our view, we've provided the due press process required by law. Um, we have tacked this on to, um, provisions under the Public Health Code that now put this within the definition of already there, what we call it a miscellaneous health hazard, which creates violations and fines that goes with it. We've tapped this into the minimum standards for dwellings, uh, in terms of having a dwelling that's occupiable and place the violation of this, uh, uh, by doing evictions or ejectments or dispossession, as the courts would say, uh, as a violation of that. So we've tried to basically find as many places in our code that we could shoehorn this information into, uh, to demonstrate that the city is serious and that its intention is, um, that we are not going to continue or start evictions and moratoriums in the middle of what is a dire situation for the people in this city. And that doesn't just protect the people who are being evicted, it protects everybody else, which is really the issue. Um, having a homeless population puts our police and fire and codes and sanitation people at higher risk by suddenly having a whole new population that have to assist every day. Um, and it just increases the number of contacts that happen. So, uh, you know, I, I, it is our hope that this is strong enough that people will acknowledge it, recognize it, and abide by it. But it has enough power and tools in it, um, to come through forcefully if need be, uh, to enforce it. And I can answer anything else you would want.
Thank you very much for that, um, thorough overview. I just wanted to confirm, going back to, um, the comments that we received in reference to, um, section three dash three fifty-five point two zero, um, subsection E.
Mm-hmm.
And F. So, as written there concerns the Greater Harrisburg Tenants United. Their concerns were, um, particularly with subsection E.
I think it's E-five is probably their biggest concern.
It is, so they're, they are requesting that section E-five be amended, um, in any reasons for lease termination, which would make a tenant ineligible for protection from eviction. Um, simply be listed explicitly along with those detailed in, um, subsections one through four.
Yeah, so, we're, I'm not wedded to the words. I, we were simply mirroring what was already here as best we could. Uh, there's a lot of varied, um, terms in a lease and contracts, and it's hard to try and make a list of all of what they could be. I think most of them were dictated by common sense, whether there's something that should subject someone to being losing possession of their property even in a crisis. Uh, for example, if the house was subject to condemnation or, or there was a sewage line leak in the basement or, or other, you know, there'd be a lot of he- health and this fitness ones. But of course, there's arbitrary ones. Um, uh, we believe the prohibition on removing for an overstay of your term would, uh, help the city enforce that, but I can't guarantee that is so. So I, if there's other language, I think it's perfectly reasonable for council to make an amendment, uh, you know, to this provision, either here or in, or in an intent language somewhere to make it clear.
Okay. And then, um, you mentioned the efficiency apartments and the boarding houses. So, I, I'm assuming that's why subsection F was drafted as such, to leave it open because you mentioned that those operating, um...
I used the phrase properly licensed and registered hotel and motel required to collect and remit hotel tax revenues to Dauphin County. We, our office has dealt with, the city has dealt with operators who claim to be innkeepers. And when we contact Dauphin County, they don't pay them anything. Um, so that would be, for our view, of sort of prima facie evidence that, that they have abused the ordinance and are improperly putting people on the street. Um, and, uh, and our office would direct codes or fire or anyone else enforcing to that direction. That, that was sort of a unique thing we've sort of worked through up here to try to come with a... So, y- y- you don't want to put the Hilton who has someone move in for a day and not leave or, you know, uh, the Days Inn or any of those that really have someone who's just showing up and not paying the bill. You don't want to put them in a position the same as a landlord because they're not legally a landlord at that point. Um, they're not really evicting people, they're just have people who are breaching their contract, uh, and aren't leaving. Um, and, and it is a tough line to know when you're there. Um, our police can't enforce those removals, which is what some of these folks want. Um, but, uh, the, uh, but that is why that is there, that they actually remit the hotel tax to the county. That's approvable event.
Sure. Thank you, thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to know, um, what we have the authority to do and why it was drafted as such.
And I would say efficiency apartments fall into there, by the way. It's a dwelling unit. I, yeah, so.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't have any additional questions. Um, President Williams, would you like me to return the floor to you or am I at liberty to, um, see if any other council members have questions regarding the bill?
Ms. Bowers, since that's in your committee, you may go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Okay, um, Councilman Majors, do you have any questions regarding Bill twenty-one?
Uh, no, no, no questions. And, um, due to, uh, my employment and how this bill would potentially have some interactions with that, I am going to, uh, have to recuse myself from, uh, any participation, uh, on, uh, voting or, or speaking directly to any pieces of the legislation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Madison?
Uh, no questions for me at this point in time, uh, but you know, this matter, I think is going to get much worse before it gets much better. So continuing the dialogue around how we can help those and, uh, protect those most vulnerable from homelessness is, uh, something I'm very eager to continue and monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Uh, I don't really have many questions, just one. Um, as we look to protect the tenants, how are we looking to ensure landlords? Um, I, I know that you said that it would still mean that the, the tenants have to pay the landlords, they still owe the money. But, um, what happens when the, the tenants don't have the money? Um, and then in the future, you know, the moratorium expires, they owe the money now, they're, they're in debt. You know, like now they owe seven thousand dollars in rent because they haven't been paying it. Um, and now they're being put out, but they can still be, uh, you know, the, the landlord can still come after them for that backdoor rent.
So Pennsylvania law allows a landlord, uh, to garnish wages, which is a horrible reality. Um, uh, and I would say this legislation solves the most immediate problem. It, it doesn't solve the other large problems that are being caused by the pandemic. You know, we want landlords not to go bankrupt because we want them to provide housing in the city. And I don't, I don't pretend this has a solution in it. I would suggest that solution may come from the council and the mayor as two thousand and twenty-one rolls in and we see the depth of this crisis reveal itself financially. Um, hopefully, the federal government will step in, hopefully, the state will step in. But as of right now, they're on the sidelines for what we need. Um, so I don't, i- it does not fix the problem, but it does not take away their right to ultimately collect.
All right, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, President Williams, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. Thank you, um, Ms. Bowers.
No problem. Vice President Allen, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, you actually, uh, covered what I had written down to ask, so we, I am good. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. This concludes, uh, the portion to Bill twenty-one, two thousand and twenty.
Sorry, we can't really hear you.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
No, we couldn't, no.
You sound really low, like you sound really far away.
Okay, sorry, um, can you hear me now?
Yes, Councilwoman Bowers, I joined about ten minutes ago. Um, I just have one question, if I could.
All right, absolutely. So we're on Bill twenty-one of two thousand and twenty, as you know, um, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. So, um, Neil, could you just, this is just a quick question. Um, who has the in- the ability to enforce it? Will it just be the city or will it be, um, the tenant as well?
It, it is just the city. It is the city and its enforcement officers because there is the potential for fines up to ten thousand dollars and imprisonment for violations.
So a tenant who has an issue would have to...
Have to bring it as a complaint to a codes officer or to the fire bureau or to the police bureau or somebody.
Okay, that is it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Bowers, I'll note that because this was done in such a hurry, there was a handful of errors that we sent on a technical amendment for today that do have to be read into the record.
Okay, um, yes, if you could please read those into the record at this time?
And I would, I would phrase it this way, I would ask for a motion for the following technical amendments, and I'll just run through the whole ordinance.
Um, I'm sorry, should we be doing that when the rules are suspended or should we be doing that in session?
We should be doing that in session, but I, I've lost track in my head where we are.
I was going to say, Neil, I was letting you go, but listen here. So, so we will do those, uh, in session. Uh, of course, Ms. Bowers, you want to, we're going to vote on this. So, uh, once we go back in the session, you can do the amendments and then do the actual voting of the, the original Bill twenty-one, okay?
I have a quick question, though, before we do that, just, and it's not with that, um, resolution, but, so I'm bringing up my... I mean, Resolution one hundred is a companion to that, correct?
It is a companion. That's why I was going to let Ms. Ms. Bowers continue on with Bill one hundred. After all the questions has been asked by council members.
That's okay. I was just thinking, I was wondering if it was a, yes, go on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Houston, could you please read Resolution one hundred of two thousand and twenty into the record?
Resolution one hundred of two thousand and twenty is a resolution declaring that the ongoing novel COVID-nineteen pandemic constitutes an emergency of such magnitude and threat to the health, welfare, and safety in the city of Harrisburg that emergency legislative action is necessary so as to allow the concurrent proposed emergency ordinance, Bill twenty-one of two thousand and twenty, amending chapter three dash three five five, state of emergency of the codified ordinances of Harrisburg to be effective immediately.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grover, if you wouldn't mind providing just a brief overview of the resolution?
Yeah, so, so Resolution, uh, one hundred is here for the very purpose of, uh, under the optional third-class city code of when council can make an ordinance effective immediately that's not a budget ordinance. And essentially, the council has to declare by resolution that there is an emergency related to the ordinance that has come before them. And this simply, uh, does a similar recitation of the history of the pandemic here in Harrisburg and elsewhere to demonstrate why there is an emergency now and how it's built to the point where we need emergency legislation to actually enforce, uh, the moratorium as opposed to have someone else's moratorium that we have no power. That's all there is to it.
Okay, thank you. Um, council members, are there any questions regarding Resolution one hundred?
Yeah, I do have one question. How long would this be in effect? Did you...
Yeah, so, the last section is the, the actual, uh, new part of the city code, uh, part B, uh, of the Public Health Code section here expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. So the law literally just goes away, uh, the, basically twelve months from now.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Bowers, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions before we go back into session? Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, this concludes the discussion portion for Bill twenty-one of two thousand and twenty and Resolution one hundred of two thousand and twenty. I would ask my colleagues to support both the bill and the resolution as we are, uh, meeting a need. Of course, it's not perfect, but it is within our authority. And I, I know that we all share the desire to protect our residents, especially it's getting colder. We're supposed to have all this snow and I, I can't sit or stand to see any... And I I can't sit or stand to see any of our residents um evicted during this time. But this time I would move to return back to our um legislative session agenda.
Making a motion uh to turn back into the agenda.
Yes.
Have a second, please, to go back into the agenda?
Sorry, Jim?
Thank you. We're now back into the agenda. Uh, Ms. Houston, uh, we've already read. Bill twenty one into record. At this time, if there's no additional questions or comments, we will uh. Turn it back to Ms. Bowers to ask for the amendments be in place.
Thank you, President Williams. Um, at this time, Mr. Grover, if you could please read the technical amendment. Uh, for Bill twenty one of twenty twenty.
So for a motion for technical amendments, the following have been corrected, clarified in the ordinance. At line two, simply there was a typo spelling of the word legislation and it was corrected. Uh, in line one eighty nine. Uh, as part of. If the right section, section two, three, five, five, eleven, oh, two. K, um. On line one eighty nine, uh, we've changed the word governors to possessive. And it says extended struck the word the, so it says governors extended order suspending. And then on two lines down, it says eviction expired. Instead of saying until August thirty one, twenty twenty, just for clarity, because of the sentence was clumsy. Uh, on line two thirty, under subsection V of the same subsection. Um, we uh removed an error and added the substance of the report of Christian Churches United, which is the main provider of much of the homeless work in Dauphin County. And so I will just read it as it reads now in its entirety. Uh, the year-long men's shelter for the area that includes Harrisburg will not be accepting emergency admissions this winter. Shelter beds for families currently have reduced availability due to COVID protocols and shelters. The shelter for women and non-binary individuals at Grace United Methodist Church on State Street. Has capacity for twenty individuals. Christian Churches United, CCU, has not been able to open a shelter for men. That they normally run at the Susquehanna Harp, a Harbor Safe Haven facility. As they cannot place long-term residents and staff at additional risk of COVID nineteen exposure. The CCU hopes to have winter hazardous weather shelter for men by early January, which would hold up to thirty men. And the local shelter system is already strained even with the current CDC moratorium. Uh, that basically is the factual basis to the homelessness problem in this piece of legislation. Uh, we then go to what is now, because that was added. Uh, line two sixty six, it's under section three, five, five, one, one, oh, three statutory binding subsection A. Uh, and and make a clarification in subpart two. Adding the city may impose penalties of fine that may not exceed one citation and then from there on it quotes the optional third class city code. We go to such subsection E of that section, referring to the agency order of the CDC. And make a clarification, adding the word that after the date, it says that was promulgated by the Centers for Disease Control. In the subpart one under there, we then add that uh, remove the word that and add with said moratorium striking is. So it says with said moratorium set to expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty. That is simply for clarity. On what is now line three seventy nine, under section three, five, five point thirteen E. Uh, there was a typo, the word of was struck and the word or was put in place, so it's evictions or ejection actions. On, under section three, five, five, twenty. In what is now line four forty three, under subsection one, we added a period. There was a typo in four forty four, we struck the word of and put or, so it says safety or health of other residents. And on four forty five, we struck a a slash and put a period where it belongs at the end of section three. And that makes up the technical corrections to uh this ordinance. I'd ask that they be accepted uh as proposed.
All right.
Thank you.
Additional questions, Ms. Bowers?
No, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, council members regarding the amendments? Ms. Uh, Houston, please call the vote on the amendments to Bill twenty one.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill twenty one amendments pass.
Thank you. Now please call the vote as amended for Bill twenty one.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Uh, I will be.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure it's also on the record. I'll have to recuse myself.
And President Williams?
Yes, and also please note that Mr. Major refused himself from the first amended. Vote, please.
So. Bill twenty one as amended passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Moving on. To Bill one hundred. So any questions or comments on Bill one hundred or any amendments?
Yeah, only only uh I guess a question would be for um the solicitor, since I did refuse myself on the previous uh bill. Would, due to my appointment with the Emergency Management Agency, would I have to also then refuse myself on uh this bill as well?
I I don't believe so, because it's really talking about the state of emergency in the city.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Ms. Houston, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Uh, yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution one hundred of twenty twenty passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Council members, we now move on to O business. Is there any O business that you'd like to address at this time? Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. So first, thank you colleagues for supporting both Bill twenty one and Resolution one hundred. Um, I think I can breathe a sigh of relief going into the holidays next week and we're currently in a holiday, knowing that we're protecting our residents. But I did want to clarify um. Regarding some of the public comments that we've been receiving uh about housing. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Department of Building and Housing Development's current budget is comprised of federal funding. That is directly from HUD. Um, so as a result, we must meet benchmarks to ensure we receive funding for these designated programs that. Um, the CDBG, that Community Development Block Grant Program we referenced earlier. The Lead Hazard Control Reduction Demonstration Grant Program, the Home Investment Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs. So unfortunately, we can't simply reallocate these federal funds received to other housing programs. However, we can allocate funds to assist with tackling blight and dem- uh demolishing properties that are endangering our residents across the entire city. I also wanted to remind everyone to apply for the Rental Assistance Grant Program. It's for rental mortgage and utility assistance and it is offered through the Department of Building and Housing. Again, please note, the funding provided for this grant program comes from the Community Development Block Grant Program administered through HUD federal funds. Um, applicants are eligible to apply for three months arrears in payments and for three months forward with a maximum of five thousand dollar limit. Uh, the grant application can be found on the city's website under the Department of Building and Housing. Labeled Rental Assistance Application. The application deadline is Tuesday, December twenty second. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any additional O business, council members? Now moving on to new business. Ms. Green?
Yes, I just wanted to announce to everyone that the Harrisburg Bureau of Police is hosting a Colts for Kids Drive. Uh, they'll be collecting new coats, gloves, scarves and hats. And the collection started on December seventh and it will run until March first. Um, if anyone would like to donate any of these items, they can donate them at the uh lobby. At the police station downtown on one twenty three Walnut Street between eight AM and eight PM. Or at the Allison Hill substation, which is three thirteen South Fifteenth Street, Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM. Thank you.
Any additional new business, council members? Mr. Majors?
Yes, uh, just a quick note, um, since we are all anticipating a um, a a snowstorm here. Um, I know that one of the garages right now, where uh the city released that they would be opening up, I believe it's the Locust Street Garage would be opening up to. Uh, for residents to be able to park their vehicles if necessary. Uh, so want to be able to utilize that. Uh, additionally, if uh, you know, this will be the first uh snowstorm really of twenty twenty. Uh, so, you know, and if you're in a, in an effort to work to assist, um, you know, i- in emergency response. Uh, if folks could, if you have a a fire hydrant near your property, if you could, if we get the snow, uh, clear a a few feet around there, so in case there were a fire. Uh, that our um. Uh, fire department could have access and also as a reminder to clear any PVC pipes. Uh, near your home that uh for your heating apparatus that could potentially have a buildup of carbon monoxide, yeah. You know, we're we're all in the middle of a a a global pandemic and we don't want any uh. Uh, folks to have any uh additional uh injuries due to uh this snowstorm or access issues. And if you could also uh work to try and clear any of the inlets, stormwater inlets around uh in and around your street. Um, if they're, if they aren't clear to try to prevent any potential flooding, because this is. Uh, if if we get what the meteorologists are projecting, you know, we could be receiving, you know, anywhere at this point between. You know, twelve inches and two feet of snow. Uh, so just want to be uh some some winter uh safety reminders. Uh, for folks as we enter into the season. And then, um, I think lastly, uh. Public Works is still collecting these through the end of the year, so if you put them out on your normal street sweeping day and in. Penitentiary snow, they will be around to um. To collect them.
Okay, any additional comments on the new business? I just want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year to all of you. I wish that um. That you enjoy your holidays with your family and you get to spend time with them. So on that note, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good evening.
Good night, everyone. Hi.